April 21, 2016, meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. Everyone, please silence electronic devices, cell phones, laptops if you're using them. Please make sure there's no noise coming out of them. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Tom Grinstad.
President accounted for.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Lisa Anderson.
Here.
Steve Brooks is excused.
Thank you. We have no minutes to approve, so we will move into our public comment period. This is an opportunity for people to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda includes discussion of the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan 2016 update and our recommendations related to that. So if anybody out there in the audience wants to talk about any particular subject unrelated to that, anything you'd like, you can come down to the podium or up there to the podium and speak. And you have three minutes. Is there anybody? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period and just move straight into our work session. So tonight's work session is our, probably our final work session on the 2016 update to the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. Just quickly, before Greg, you start, or if you want to answer Phyllis's question, we're going to have an opportunity to work through additional changes that we come up with, correct?
Yeah. Greg Ock, planning department. With me is Lisa Poole and Chris Cook will be joining us at some point. Yeah, so last time we worked through all of the, your suggested changes where we were generally in agreement and took on a couple of the more thornier, thornier issues. So now, tonight, it's time to talk about anything else that, either comments that you made previously or more recently, that you would like to see changes made in the So that's the program for tonight, and, you know, we'll go where you guys lead us. We do want to talk about the ADU policy at some point.
Yeah. We can definitely talk about that. I think everyone's received the brief note. Procedurally, quick question. We have findings of fact, conclusions, recommendations prepared for us. Ultimately, we're going to have to make a motion on this to make that recommendation in the event that additional changes are made to the existing Exhibit A language for some reason or another, or that new concepts are raised. Can we still vote tonight?
Yes.
Is that, can we just, we can kind of document those
Right.
the same way we did last week? And then the motion on this would need to be Exhibit A, including any amendments?
That you make tonight.
And that we made tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So just so everybody knows, we, you know, we can move to that point if we can get through all of our individual or collective issues with any of these items. And I think that we can just kind of get into it. We kind of went through the list. Greg, you have any suggestions about how we handle this?
Again, I think, you know, individual commissioners who suggested changes that we haven't talked about or that you haven't voted on, now's the time to do that.
Lisa, thoughts?
Actually, we did have, because we ended on a high note with the ADU last week, but we did have under the Transportation Chapter one change that we did not discuss.
You're absolutely right.
That we talked about coming back to. And so that would be on the summary, page 14, number 36. And it was a request that I had made for the policy T3, because since it's not supposed to be so specific, I wanted taken out that encouraging higher-density transit-oriented development along certain WTA high-frequency transit routes, GO lines connecting urban villages. And taken out is within a quarter mile of, so that it's less specific. And I believe that in the Exhibit A, there's a couple of places where it was taken out of the text. So hopefully, people will support that deletion of the specific quarter mile. And I had given an example of why I wanted that was if you go down James Street and then connect to Alabama, there's a frequency, a high-frequency line there. And if you go a quarter mile, I had driven through those neighborhoods, and that entire chunk from Sunset to Alabama, excuse me, could possibly be developed. And my concern was, is that some of the areas where this runs is some of our more affordable housing in Bellingham. And so I didn't want to see some of the single-family neighborhoods with more of a midpoint-price housing being demolished to put in high-density. I think it's important to preserve it, and not that it guarantees it, but I think taking out that quarter-mile comment would help support that.
Thank you. So you're right, we did not get to that one. It looks like staff did incorporate your recommended language into the exhibit, but I think it would be appropriate to allow the group to have a discussion like you suggested. There was also Comment 64. I don't know who this came from, but is it yours, Jeff? There was another suggestion for the language that kind of, I think, spoke to the same issue in a different way. So Jeff, of course, if you want to talk about that, or if you think that Lisa's addresses it, please chime in. But in general, is there anybody who has any, you know, thoughts on that? Any discussion about it? Jeff?
Well, I agree three-quarters of the way. But my, my Number 64 actually takes a different tact, which is to encourage higher-density development along arterials that are on those transit routes, just as a matter of fact of over the time window or time horizon of the plan. You know, as there's an opportunity, if we're not going to infill in the neighborhoods per se, maybe we can infill on the boundaries of the neighborhoods, particularly in the ones that were downzoned. But in, in some of those areas where there's such a high, I had in my notes with the original provision that some of the downzone neighborhoods had a lot of non-conforming uses on the arterials anyway. And it seems like that's a place where you could have some infill that wouldn't impact core neighborhoods. So I'm actually approaching it from a little different view. You know, Ellis might be an example, or, you know, some of those different areas. So it's different. And I don't know if you want to talk about that or not.
Well, it appears that it still would restrict them, restrict them to, it would address Lisa's comment where it keep, restricts them to the routes themselves?
I think her comment is if you have older, more rundown housing along arterials that's less desirable for single-family neighborhoods, she would prefer to see that housing retained as lower-to-moderate-price-range housing rather than redeveloped into higher-density, if I'm speaking for you. But I'm thinking that's one of the tensions that might be here, is that focus.
Yeah, I would prefer to see that current neighborhood plans are not necessarily thrown to the wayside. And using Ellis as an example, I know York Neighborhood did a lot of work in order to try to preserve a lot of those late 1800, early 1900 housing. But they have not necessarily completely downzoned that specific area, because those houses can be used for mixed use, for business, live-work units, instead of just single-family housing. So as far as doing high-density, I'd like to try to stay within. If it's a commercial, it's commercial. If it's considered residential, it's residential unless neighborhood plans in the future address specifically doing a change. That would be my preference. But my primary concern, given with what was written originally, was just making sure that it doesn't go a quarter mile into a neighborhood.
Well, my reading of the, I'm a little confused, because when I read the proposed policy that Lisa suggested, I think it doesn't say anything about preserving existing housing stock. But it actually, but I'm also confused, because it, I don't know, I just feel like it's, it kind of does tackle what you're looking for, Jeff. But maybe I'm just, oh, is the difference high versus higher? Is that?
Yeah, I wasn't proposing high-density. I'm, I'm kind of acknowledging that in a lot of the core of Bellingham.
Higher.
There's a lot of non-conforming uses, like Cornwall apartments, that, you know, the development pattern used to be, you'd have corner shops and some churches and some apartment buildings and, you know, duplex, duplex to fourplexes that were along arterials. We got away from that in the downzones in the, in the mid-2000s. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as a potential development that wasn't high-density but was pulling in those non-conforming uses that already exist, and also building on that, at that kind of level, with those height levels and that, that size feeling of what's there.
Garrett?
Well, I mean, I just, when I look through it, I guess the quarter-mile designation doesn't really bother me, you know, certain WTA high-frequency routes. When it describes the process that you'd have to go through in order to get, you know, this development patterns approved, it's, you know, reaching out to the neighborhoods and, and going through the whole, the entire vetting. So, I mean, whether it's a quarter mile or half mile, it doesn't bother me to remove the quarter mile, because I don't know that something, you know, may be appropriate if it's a half a mile, just depending on the location and what the neighborhood is. So some of these, you know, some of these changes are going to happen over time in, in some areas of single-family neighborhoods, and it's, but it's not going to happen, you know, with the waving of a wand. It's going to be vetted and go through the legislative process. And I think the policy just speaks to that. We may need to look at that, because we have to, we have to accommodate growth. So I don't want to be overly restrictive. I, I like the way it's modified in '17, and I would recommend leaving it at, you know, kind of as is.
As, as the Exhibit A suggests?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think it sort of accomplishes that. It doesn't pin you into a specific distance, you know?
So you're suggesting that along could be interpreted to mean further afield than directly on? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I see the intent as clear.
Yeah.
Where you have high, high transit, you know, we're looking at those areas and saying, hey, can we accommodate some existing density here? You know, I know that we need to get too technical with it, but.
Anybody else?
Well, I have a question. If this is adopted, would the quote "high-density" unquote, that would require a rezone. Is that correct?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. So then we're, we're covered. I mean, this is a policy statement.
Yeah.
And should developers or somebody find a spot that they want to do high-density relatively close to a, to a 15-minute GO line, they've got to jump through all the hoops to make that happen. And that seems to me like a reasonable thing to, to require.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, Tom. And I think, as Lisa wrote it, it's very broad. And I personally think it, it could capture Lisa's concerns and Jeff's concerns and Garrett's concerns. It's pretty broad. So I like the way it's been written, just because it's, it's better to be broad than be too specific. Lisa?
And I just wanted to clarify, when I spoke of a specific area and the housing, 20 years from now, or 10 years from now, if there is a potential for development, and it's the right fit in the right area, and it goes through the process, and it gets approved, as Garrett has said, it doesn't necessarily a quarter mile. There may be an area, you know, abutting next to an urban-village line or something where it is appropriate, that could possibly go further into the area. And I just wanted to get rid of this specific language of a quarter mile, because a lot of the other bullet points I, I support, so.
Okay. So I think, do we want to actually vote on it, or can we get a general consensus that people are okay with Lisa's language? Yeah? Okay. That's how we've been moving through them, mostly. Thanks for mentioning that. I think that, so in the back of the document, there weren't a lot of yellow items, but that's where most of Planning Commission's recommendations occurred. So I'm sure that maybe everybody, or maybe some of us, have some specific comments we'd like to talk about. I think it would be appropriate to give everybody an opportunity to go through those, and then circle back to any items within Exhibit A, like the ADU discussion. And just, there probably won't be very many of those, because there wasn't a lot of comment from staff on those, and we could do those at the very end. So, Tom?
Yeah. I'd like to start off with just a, a general comment. I took a look at the existing comprehensive plan today, and I added it up and there were, if I added correctly, 552 pages in the existing comprehensive plan. And we're getting it down to, in rough figures, maybe 400. You know, those old, dead white guys wrote the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution on far fewer sheets than, than we're doing this policy statement. But we're, I think, headed in the right direction. I would like to see stuff like in the pro, the Parks, Open Space, Yada thing with all those tables and stuff somehow being ripped out and had as, as a reference, where they could be updated whenever they need to be updated. And, you know, we can squeeze this down a whole lot further, I think. But apparently, that's not in the cards this time. But I think we've taken a, our staff has taken a pretty good swing at making it much more legible, a lot less bureaucracy in this, in this document, in all the chapters that we've looked at.
Thank you. I agree. And I commend you guys for writing it this way. And really, if you take the Parks chapter out, which didn't really change in length at all, and you take out, like, the capital facilities, the, those ones, I think, you guys did a really good job of streamlining the, the other chapters, like land-use housing, and what you've done already with environment and the economics. So, you know, where, where there's that opportunity, I agree with Tom, you know, there's, I think I told Leslie this, you know, it'd be nice next time to see if they could put a little effort into wordsmithing it, since there was a lot of repetition. But it's great. It's this thick, whereas before it was that thick. Anyway, do, how, how best to handle this? I think that, I think there's a notation in here. So our comments began on page 20 of the Public Comment Tracker, item 53, and a number of them got addressed through some of the, is that right, Lisa?
Well, no, I want to say, I mean, there's two separate comment trackers. There's one just for Planning Commission, and then the other for public.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And so this entire document is all your comments.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to know.
I'm sorry. What I meant to say was the comments from the Planning Commission that were, originally you gave us the comment tracker, and then we made a bunch of written comments to you. And those written comments started on page, on number 53, on page 20, of your right, of the Planning Commission tracker, many of which have been addressed. Do people just want to kind of chime in with their issues? Or do we want to run through, I mean, the staff organize these by, by commissioner? Do we want to start on the end and go through, or start with 53 and go through, skipping the ADU discussion on anything? Any suggestions about how to do this most efficiently?
My issue's back with number 30 and 35, so.
Well, we can, and so maybe when we, you know, maybe it's best to go by individual. Jeff had a quick thought.
I didn't really have any, so maybe just go by commissioner.
You didn't have any. You can go first. Since you didn't have any.
We're done.
We're done with Jeff.
But I was just going to say, if you go by person, we could probably just wrap.
That might be, that might be the easiest. And that way, we can address Phyllis's concern, where she might have to jump back. Does that sound okay? Lisa, were you going to suggest otherwise?
Very similar.
Don't have any?
We have more in common than, you know, we might think. But I was just thinking by commissioner, because I think one of our tasks was to identify the areas that we felt hadn't been changed or addressed, and then come back with those. And pretty much, what hasn't been addressed of mine was more opinion and comment, not a specific request. So the only thing for me that I've identified left would be the, well, that I thought was completed was the ADU, but it sounds like it's reopening again.
And we'll come back to that, for sure. Okay, well, that's great. Garrett, should I, should I, you want to skip me and go to you?
No, go, go, go.
Sure?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I didn't have a lot either. I have to jump back to my section. So I just have two things. I made a comment, number 73, on page 24. And there's a policy that says promote and encourage the use of sustainability tools and reading systems, and it lists a bunch of specific ones. And I had proposed a, a change in the tone of that, which would be just to promote and encourage sustainable and energy-efficient design and construction, just in general, and then explore the effectiveness of these tools. And staff, you, I appreciate that you addressed a, a big part of that by noting that we already have some policies in the chapter, or in the chapters that promote just energy efficiency in general. So I, I think the, the first sentence in my proposed language is, has been adequately addressed by that explanation. I just would like to explain to everybody and see what staff thinks. The second sentence I wrote, "Explore the effectiveness of, of these tools in achieving sustainable development practices." I think it's important to explore whether we're actually accomplishing anything by promoting these tools, because in the industry, I've spoken to people who have said, "I can go build an energy-efficient, sustainable building and not get a LEED certification on it, and it's still an energy-efficient, sustainable building. And to get the LEED certification, I have to hire someone and pay a bunch of money, and it increases the cost of my product, and I'm discouraged from," I mean, I've talked to contractors, like, "Why would I do that? I'm just going to go build a nice building that's energy-efficient." And from their perspective, using those tools adds no value. It just costs them money. And so I wonder if those tools are really that effective in encouraging us to build buildings that are energy-efficient, sustainable. And that's why I wanted to, and I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying I wonder, because of feedback I've received. So the reason I wrote that second sentence, and maybe it could be a standalone policy, new policy, is that I think we should be looking at whether or not we're actually accomplishing anything by encouraging these, because the next step might be requiring them. And if we're not accomplishing anything, I don't want to go down that road.
Can I chime in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
For a specific example, LEED, under, under the LEED certification, you can get a point for putting on a, a white roof, you know, a flat roof that's white, which supposedly helps to eliminate heat buildup in cities. Well, the roofing industry has done a couple of studies, and that's true in the South. In the temperate zones and the colder climates, having a white roof actually increases heat load, or increases energy consumption, because the heat load is larger than the cooling load. And yet, LEED does not recognize it, at, at this point, does not recognize that at all. So in effect, if you're doing the smart and sustainable thing, and putting on a darker-colored roof in our climate or in Minneapolis, you are, in effect, being penalized a point under the LEED system.
Well, that's a good example. Thank you.
Well, I, I do just want to point out that the city has, or passed a resolution promoting the use of LEED in city buildings and in the private sector. So I think we do need that policy language that talks about promoting it, because it matches up with what we, our current practice.
And I guess what I'm saying is, is just because we have a current practice, doesn't mean we shouldn't explore whether that current practice is being effective.
No, I agree, but I, I would hesitate to take out that, that language promoting it. Maybe there's a way to merge the two.
Maybe, maybe we could just add that second sentence from my proposed language to the existing policy. I don't know if that addresses it. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, yeah?
I'd like to just support the language specifically, because, you know, a lot of things are passed in ignorance. You know, who could argue against LEED? You know, you wouldn't actually talk about it, increasing the cost of buildings and increasing the effective cost of housing supply and everything else. Because LEED, everybody knows that LEED is great, you know? And you've just, you pay for it, and it's part of public building procurement. And so you just pass things like that. And I think the policy that you mentioned is just, is a good policy, is let's go back and evaluate the tools, and if it is necessary to go back and change, you know, the city council can always change with their original resolution or ordinance, I don't know what it was. You know, to reflect current reality, that's all for the better. And the other comment, well, actually, I can wait on that. But I, I've just heard the LEED come up a number of times, when we were talking about design standards and, and points, and, you know, when you're going through some of the different, like, plan, and some of these other ones. It was coming up as one of those factors, and it kept getting identified by name, whereas I remember having discussions about trying to support the objective but not the organization. And so I think this is another one of those.
Garrett?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think you have to be careful when you're referencing specific programs. Those things tend to change over time. You know, what, what's good now, 10 years from now, may not be. But the overall intent is that we want to build more efficient, more sustainable buildings. And this is a broad view policy document. I like the change, and I support it.
Which, which one?
The, the way you had it written.
Originally?
Yeah.
Well, that was my intent, was to try and be broad. Do you think it would be inconsistent with the council's ordinance to just say, "Promote and encourage the use of sustainable and energy-efficient design and construction techniques?" Or is, or is that, I mean, I understand the issue, right? We don't want to be too repetitive throughout the document. And I struggle with the naming the specifics. But I, my main concern here is making sure that we're just making sure that these things are working, that they're effective, and not a waste of everybody's time and money.
I think we would agree, and, and we would be fine adding the last, your last sentence, LEED to the policy.
Is, is it, does it read funny to say, "Promote and encourage these things, and then explore their effectiveness?" Probably not, right?
Or it could be a separate policy.
You could do, I feel like you could do both. You can promote them at the same time, monitor them. So, okay, well, I, I'd like to make a motion, then, that we add the second sentence of my proposed language on page 25 to the existing policy, LU 68.
I see.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I was just going to say, it makes sense to not just do something blindly and then put it into existence and not check it later. I, I think it's very savvy.
Oh, I agree. So, okay, with that, let's do a quick vote, then. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. You can add that. So I don't want to take up too much more time, but I, my, my one other issue is actually basically the same exact issue, which is that when we make decisions to do something, we should be monitoring them to make sure that they're working and not resulting in unintended consequences. And that's item 74 and 75. One of them's a proposed policy regarding monitoring our proposed shift in the balance of single-family and multifamily units. And 75 is actually a section I would like to see added into the land use, or housing chapter, again, acknowledging that this shift is occurring and that we should be monitoring it. Staff cited a couple policies regarding land supply and housing affordability monitoring. Those are very broad, LU 60 and H22, and they don't speak to this specific issue. And I guess I just want to take one minute to explain why I wrote these two policies. We, whether we want to admit it or not, are engaging with this comp plan update in a relatively significant shift in how we are going to accommodate our housing. We're proposing to shift 10% from, of our balance, from single-family to multifamily. And that will generate, I think, in the 70s, a 70% projection or something around there? 75% of our, our housing? Yes. It's, it's, okay, let's find it.
It would, according to Chris Beehe, who, we just had this discussion, like, yesterday, it'll be about 50/50. In 20 years.
So you don't understand what I'm saying? No, hold on. You don't understand what I'm saying. We are going from 40 to 50, or 45/55 to 50/50. That's a 10% change. But in order to achieve that, over the next 20-year period, we are going to have to build 70-some percent of our units as multifamily units.
Which is about what we do now.
It's, it's a big change. And I think, I'm okay with it. I know there was a lot of heartburn on this Planning Commission, and staff obviously didn't agree with us about this particular issue when we went through the growth projection. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a big change, and I'm okay with it. That ship has sailed. We are no longer arguing about what We are no longer arguing about what population number we're gonna pick. That's in the county's hands now. But I think it's wise to at least acknowledge that that's a change. And at least say, we should monitor the impacts on housing affordability of this change. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I, I think it's what Phyllis just said. It's like, we're making this big change, it's all over our plan, infill, 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 urban villages, urban villages, urban villages, multifamily, multifamily, multifamily. Why not step back and have a policy that says, let's just keep an eye on this and see if this has an impact on housing affordability? Just in case it does. And then we have to rethink how we're doing things. And so I think maybe, staff, maybe, the response makes me feel like you misunderstood me, and I wanted to go back to this discussion of expansion. I don't want to go back to that discussion of expansion. That, again, I feel like that ship has sailed. What I want to do is say, let's at least keep an eye on this. And so the intent of that policy that I proposed, monitor the city's proposed shift in the balance of single-family, multifamily units, to assess the impacts of this change on housing affordability across all housing forms, is pretty clear in speaking to that particular issue I'm concerned about. So that's why I proposed that. And I'd just like to hear any comments, and I'm not asking anybody to support it, I just want everyone to understand it, because I felt like the staff response didn't really speak to my, my particular issue. Lisa?
I think if you want to do research to find out what impacts affordability of housing, you've picked a couple items, being the, the shift. But there's so many variables. So if, you know, when I think of the policy that the city has recommended, monitor housing affordability, they're not identifying a specific variable that could impact it. Land supply could be one of them. It could be the cost of labor and construction. It could be the, you know, basically, supply and demand, which, you know, there's a lot of things that you could have, you know, tuition become unaffordable and people don't go to college. So all of a sudden, we have, you know, eight thousand students vacating the, the city and county across the board. You know, you could have economic situations where we have a great recession or crash, and that's gonna impact it. So, I mean, if we want to look at, you know, identifying what's causing, you know, the affordability of housing, we should expand the criteria other than whether it's single-family shifting to multifamily, and how that affects the, the cost overall. I mean, if you're gonna do research, one of the first things is you have to identify all of the possible variables and then adjust for that. Because you can read into something very quickly and say, oh, prices have gone out the roof, or prices have plummeted. And if you're just looking at the one aspect being, you know, potential land supply, because that's kind of what this comes down to, you're really kind of missing the opportunity to truly identify what is causing the effective cost. So I just caution on that. It's not a bad thing, but I think in a way, it is bottlenecking and limiting what the scope of taking a look at why it's happening. Whereas the city is much more broad, monitoring housing affordability. You could add something, you know, to help identify the, the factors that have, you know, caused prices to go up or down, or however you want to verbalize that. But I would look at a shift that way, so that you keep it really broad versus identifying a specific aspect. And then, because it may not be the cause and effect.
You know what? I appreciate that comment, and I think that that's a really good point about a broader perspective. And I was just, while you were talking, I was thinking about how to modify this policy to capture what I'm concerned about, but also what you're talking about. And just, what if, what if we said, monitor the city's housing affordability across all housing forms to identify what factors may be contributing to, or, you know, some, that's not exactly, you know, take out this focus and make it about monitoring housing affordability to identify which factors it might be? Because that also strikes on my issue, which is we're picking this course, right? And we want to make sure we're going down that correct course. The, the policy in the H twenty-two, the existing policy speaks specifically to affordable housing, and I'm talking about housing affordability. So let me think about that. Phyllis?
Well, what about availability? I mean, would seem to me to capture a number of things that affordability doesn't necessarily speak to. But if you had availability, if we have an excessive amount of multifamily and too few single-family, or vice versa, I mean, it would seem to me, availability would be the key thing that we should be looking at. And that would speak to price and, and, you know, a number of other factors.
Jeff?
This issue sort of encapsulates what I've struggled with over the past five years, in that there are obvious structural problems with our housing market, both for single-family and multifamily. And one of the things, you know, there's very low availability for both. And, you know, as much as we want to assume that supply and demand is taking care of everything, it doesn't. For some reason, I shouldn't say for some reason. Staff has pointed out that there are an extraordinary number of single-family lots in the city of Bellingham that are available for development through that whole discussion. I, on the other hand, look at absolute historic low interest rates, absolute historic high values of single-family homes. In my wildest dreams, I would never imagine that you wouldn't have houses popping up like mushroom, but you don't. So what is it? Is it developers just refuse to build something that people want to buy? Is it impact fees are tipping the balance, so all of a sudden, there's not a market for a particular thing? Is there some other issue going on? And so, you know, part of it for me is, is getting back to that structural question is, how is our housing market performing? And maybe doing a annual or biennial review of how is supply meeting demand? How is affordability objectives being met? And I don't want it to just be a waste of money, you know, we have some consultant come in and do some sort of study, but, you know, to develop the staff expertise to be able to deal with the housing economics and be able to just step back and look at what's going on in the community. And if we have a particular problem, and I would say like a one percent vagancy in rental housing is a problem, why is there a problem? What, why is the market not responding to it? And what can be done? Is it, is it a supply, a lot supply issue? Is it some other issue that's going on? Is there a financing issue that's, that somehow shut down part of the market? But from my perspective, that's different than what you were asking specifically, in your, in your recommendation. But it is more stepping back and looking at trying to do a QAQC type of program on reviewing the entire housing market and trying to figure out why there are deficiencies in it, and how to address those on a going basis? Something like that?
Yeah. You're, you're speaking the same, the same language that Lisa is, essentially, to broaden that look and look at the, look at the bigger picture of what's causing this problem.
Yeah, but also on a continuous basis, and, and building the in-house capacity to actually evaluate that and understand it, present it to decision-makers, you know, so that, so that somebody's paying attention to it? Because we just have a very dysfunctional market here. It's, it's really head scratching to me, why we are where we are, and why we're facing all the problems we're facing.
Garrett?
Well, I agree with Lisa, but I also agree with Phyllis as far as, I think this, the idea behind the shift, the shift that we're talking about is a shift in housing choices, in what's available in housing. Does that have an impact on affordability? Absolutely. Is it the only impact on affordability? No. So I do think it's important to acknowledge that in our twenty-year planning horizon, we are projecting that seventy-five percent of the new units being built are gonna be multifamily. That's gonna have an impact on housing choices. And it's gonna have an impact on housing affordability, not the only one, but it will. And I think it's reasonable to have a policy saying that we need to monitor this. It's a pretty big assumption, that people are gonna want it. And what happens? If we start seeing a lot of migration towards the county, where they can get single-family detached homes? That could happen. And that's, and it, some would say it is happening. And that's not decreasing sprawl, then, that's just increasing the footprint of your sprawl. Bellingham may not be sprawling in growth, but Waukesha County, which is all of our home, is expanding its footprint, and that is sprawl. So I don't know how to word it exactly, I mean, it's your comment, I'm not gonna doctor it up, but I, I do think that they're separate, you know, affordability and housing choices are related, but they are separate, and maybe that could be written in a way to, you know, kind of capture both.
Well, I think Lisa's concept, stepping back, would allow, if we could, if I could craft language, that it would, it would encapsulate what you're concerned about and what I'm concerned about as a part of the, the picture. We might, if we can do effective monitoring, we might find that land supply or housing choice is the issue, or is not the issue. So I just wrote this down, and just like thoughts, what if we said, and Jeff, I think you're right, we have to do it a lot, not just once, it has to be continuous. What if we said regularly monitor the city's housing affordability across all housing forms to identify key factors that increase housing costs? So we're looking at all of our housing forms, and we're looking at the affordability of all those forms, and we're doing it regularly, and we're identifying the key factors that increase our housing costs.
Modification, I probably will mangle this a bit, but the last part of your line was...
To identify key factors that increase housing costs.
Instead of increase housing costs, I would look at effects affordability. Because housing cost, I feel, is inherently gonna go up. And so that's a given. I mean, it, it does. I lived here twenty years, and I haven't really known it to dip. But it's an aspect of affordability, because it could be what's out on the market, but it also could be the lack of livable wages. So...
Good point.
So, and since we're talking affordability, I think that would be appropriate switch.
I just wonder, I mean, the original intent is to, is to monitor the, the significant change that we're making in this twenty-year planning period versus the last twenty-year planning period, which is the projection of how many multifamily units, people are gonna desire to live in multifamily units, whether that's condominiums or, you know, apartments. That's the big shift, and, I mean, the policy doesn't really speak to that, you know? And I, and that was, as I understood how you originally crafted it, and that's...
Well, it is how I originally crafted it, I just, I heard Lisa and her thoughts on broadening it, because, I mean, it's true, this is my issue, but it's true that it could be that this is not an issue. And it could be something else. Like Jeff said, we have a pretty unique housing market, and it could be something completely different. And I think jobs have a bigger impact, frankly, but, you know, maybe the biggest. But I, I don't know.
I just don't want to limit the net that we throw, because it could be one factor, and it could rise to the top impact. But there may be an unknown, and if we don't cast a wide net with open eyes looking at what is impacting it, we may not identify something that maybe the next time we come to the compound, we specifically address it at that point. So I just don't want to limit to just one factor. And I understand where you're going with it, but I just encourage to broaden it so that those unknown factors that could be there now, because it is kind of a wonky market, or what could develop over the next seven years, we're not limiting our scope of view and maybe not catching it.
So you, you want to catch Donald Rumsfield's unknown unknowns?
Oh, don't take me in politics, please.
Well, can I ask staff a question? How much are we already monitoring housing affordability in general? I mean, is it true that we're, we're kind of watching that?
Yeah, in the consolidated plan and the action plan that we update every year, we are monitoring the affordability of housing.
And, and I guess, that kind of brings me back to, I guess, your point, Garrett, is I feel like Beehe's got the numbers every year. So we, maybe, I mean, if we water the policy down so much that we're talking about monitoring housing affordability, we're already doing that, kind of, on a broad sense, and it may be, may not be worthwhile to have a specific policy about it. And I guess my, my big concern is, is more specific than that. You know, it's really specific to this change. I do think you're right, Garrett, that's the biggest change in this document. Jeff?
Well, the missing piece is what do you do about it?
What do you do about it?
When you get these numbers every year, and you look at it, do you revise policies? Do you revise fees? Do you revise incentives? Or are those locked in? Because if there's no corrective mechanism, it's a paper exercise. The other thing I'd point out is, it's sort of interesting, it's actually speaking to your original point, is, at least in my circle, the people I've known that have been looking for housing have been looking to buy condos in the, you know, one-seventy-five to two-twenty-five range, and there's nothing out there. And so for them, it's always been a question of, do you, do you drive until you can qualify? So do you go buy someplace out in the county, you know, a small house in a, in a newer development, that's maybe two-twenty-five, two-thirty-five, somewhere in there? Or do you go to buy multifamily and, or buy a condo? And their experience has been, they would prefer to buy the multifamily and be in town, as opposed to being part of the sprawl. Now, that's just the people I've talked to, they're probably people that have, you know, maybe I'm just out of sync. But point is, I'm thinking if somebody's watching that, and somebody's paying attention to it, and applying some correctives to policies over time, it may not be unrealistic to have that shift. And it may be something that happens, but I agree, you have to watch for it, and you have to decide what you're gonna do about it.
Well, I guess that's what I'm struggling with, and I, I don't feel nearly as confident in the language I drafted as I did when I drafted it, but I think that the issue exists, and we're kind of in agreement on this issue. It's like, we need to be paying attention to this, because I feel like we're skipping into the sunset with this, and no one is acknowledging that there could be some, that we might be wrong, you know? It's all like, everyone, everyone wants an apartment, it's hunky-dory. Old people want to live in apartments, young people want to live in apartments. And when you read this, when you read this document, it's very positive about this change, and I'm cool with that. But what if we're wrong about that? How's that gonna make things, how are the prices gonna be affected by that?
Well, it basically means it's an external market then, and that means that single-family cul-de-sac development, it being Ferndale, and the more hip urban, whatever you want to call it, development style would be in Bellingham. I mean, that's almost what this is charting, because there's not the single-family housing inventory and space to grow and everything.
At all.
I mean, we've been around this, and around this, and around this. So I, I don't know what the answer is.
Ferndale will be our bedroom community. Lisa, hold on. Lisa, do you have a comment?
Well, I mean, you're emphasizing apartments, and that's not really what we're expecting this growth to be accommodated in. I mean, we're talking also about small lot, single-family homes, accessory dwelling units, both detached and attached. We've got the infill toolkit, which we're promoting, and we hope to make changes to in the future. And we're seeing a lot more happening with that. Chris handles all the applications. So I just want to emphasize, it's not just apartments.
I, I agree, and I apologize for making it seem that way. I am very supportive of those actions that the city's taking, all of them, the subdivision ordinance updates, and what we want to do with those, and the infill toolkit and ADUs. But the feedback we receive from our community is not so supportive of those things. So there's a little bit of, like, we want our cake and we want to eat it too in our community. We want urban infill, but we don't want to accommodate urban infill unless it's over there. And I'm speaking about the public to a certain degree with this. And so that's what concerns me, is we can talk all day about how great it's gonna be, and how we're gonna do all these things, but then, is our council gonna support those code changes when a hundred people from the neighborhoods get up and say they don't want them? We don't know. And so we might put ourselves in a position where we don't have the tools to accomplish the goals we're putting in here. And I personally am supportive of putting these goals in here, because I think it will be harder for people not to support those tools if we have the goals in here. It will be harder to oppose those. I'm just, I, I agree, I guess. I'm just a little bit nervous about the change.
Well, and we do have lots of studies, and we're happy, and we've included some of them in the comment tracker, and we're happy to provide you with additional studies as well, that this isn't just a local trend, it's a national trend. And I know that Happy Valley neighborhood, for instance, is interested in some, using some of these tools. So there are some neighborhoods that actually are supportive, and that's sort of, you know, we sort of see that happening.
Garrett?
Well, I, I mean, I think the policy could be drafted just to speak to exactly what it is, is to, you know, monitor our projections about housing desire, you know, choices that people are, you know, in housing forms, in availability, and just monitor our projections, make sure that they're in line with, you know, what, what's happening out there, and be responsive to it. It could come in the form of an annexation request. If there's an area that has an annexation request, and we have a policy that says mon... If there's an area that has an annexation request and we have a policy that says monitor how effective our projections about single-family versus multifamily are and those annexation requests can show that, can demonstrate that there's a demand for a certain kind of housing. That should be, you know, encompassed in monitoring and that should be factored into those kinds of requests. So, again, it's your policy and I, I mean, I think there's a consensus about monitoring, but I don't know if you want to draft it a certain way or just let it lie or.
I don't know.
Move on?
Yeah, you know what? I feel like I'm wasting everybody's time. I, I, I think, I guess, I just want to, I just need to express those concerns on the record. You know, maybe it's too much to push for that and I'm okay with that. I just, and I hope that, I really, really, I'm very supportive of what we're doing, frankly, with all of this. So, with the direction we're going, so I'm hoping I'm going to be wrong about my concerns 10 years from now, that, that we're going to have that change. But I'm concerned about it. I think, I, I don't feel like I've got adequate language in my head and I don't feel like I could garner support for what I wrote. So, I think I'm just going to withdraw those comments and, and let it ride. Jeff?
Just a final comment, maybe to make you feel better. You know, most of the public comment we get are from a certain age and demographic homeowners.
Agreed.
You know, when we sit and we hear comment, it's almost always the same folks pushing the same thing. We don't hear from the majority of people in the city which are renter, who are renters or who are priced out of the housing market and have no hope to buy a house for $300,000. We're not hearing from those people because they feel disenfranchised, so I've heard in talking with people. So, again, we're representing the broader community and trying to accommodate that. And so, I'm not so sure that we're completely off on the wrong track here. And I think that there is a lot of demand out there, it's just not being heard. And if you look at the situation in Seattle, that switch flipped. You know, it went from being very much like Bellingham to now all of a sudden, people are very concerned about having different housing forms and, and hefting their political weight to make sure that it happens. So, we don't know.
Yeah.
But there is a voice that, voices that tend not to be heard here.
I, I think you're right and I think probably the, the majority of the people are not speaking in the community. And so, if we go there, I guess, maybe my comment should be toward the people with political will and not those of us who are volunteers to suggest that, you know, keep, keep what Jeff said in mind as we work through these issues moving forward. Because there are a lot of voices that aren't, that aren't heard that maybe don't get consideration when council's thinking about these things. So, anyway, thank you, Jeff. And I'm sorry for taking up so much time on that. I just think it's very important. So, anyway, let's move on to Garrett because that was my last comment.
I don't have anything that I discussed last week. I mean, a couple procedural things, I guess, on how this is going to be presented to council. I imagine, I see that we have a supplemental document. We talked about incorporating public planning commissions comments into the body of the chapters. That's going to happen. I would assume you guys just didn't have time to do that prior to this meeting. Am I correct in that?
Yes, we will, we will prepare a red line version for council with all of your recommended changes.
Will we have a chance to see that at all? Do you have a chance to see the red line item, document that you're talking about?
You can see it, yeah, when it comes out and goes to council, probably not beforehand.
It'll just be a reflection of this exhibit A that you, so it should be.
It'll be all the changes that you approve.
Plus, the one, one we made and any others we might make.
Any others you make tonight?
That's it for me.
Thanks, Garrett. Tom?
No, I didn't really have specific changes. I, I just ranted like an old coot.
All right, thank you. Phyllis?
Yes.
I know you have one item, at least.
I have one item. In addition, on our tracker, it refers to item number 30 and item number 35. And specifically regarding the Mount Baker Theater in our Capitol Facilities Chapter, on page number three of 39, goal number six says to promote the arts, culture, and provide access to local, regional, and national history. So, it's definitely a goal that would encompass the Mount Baker Theater. And then, looking forward into page 16, 17, 18, and 19 refers specifically to the museum and, or museums and the libraries. And my recommendation is that the Mount Baker Theater be included as three items, one of those three items. And the concern, I, I understand I got from staff was that there were several other buildings. I wasn't thinking of this as like the federal building or anything like that as a piece of real estate, but more as a, I mean, that is indeed true. It is an asset of the city's, from the point of view of real estate. But it also is supporting a goal in here and yet not mentioned. And I was asked to provide some language, which I have done and I could easily provide it to whomever might need it. But I looked for things that might otherwise be, that we're leaving out, that would, that would otherwise, the Mount Baker Theater would be supplanting and it, things like water and sewer, stormwater, police, fire, and education. And I don't see anything else in there that is specific that would be, well, we're counting these three things, but we're not counting those others over there as being several. Maybe there are some examples that I've overlooked.
When you suggested you've got language, would it be?
It was sent out.
Like a whole section?
Yes. It was sent out a couple times, actually.
Yeah.
And I looked at the way the language in the booklet is set up. And then I took information that I got from Mount Baker Theater and drafted something that was in a similar style. And the, for example, the, the libraries goes one, two, two, well, at least two pages, two and a half pages. And then, and then the museum is, is a little bit shorter. But I thought this was quite in keeping and I think that would just round out the cultural aspects of this, of the city to have all three included. Greg?
Greg?
Yeah, I, I think we would, we would be fine with adding your description here, Phyllis, or maybe a slightly shortened version of that. I think that's appropriate. I wouldn't want to add this part about forecast of future needs or projected key areas for growth. This really has to do with the operation of the theater and the city has no role in the operation of the theater. We, we own the building, basically. We can't tell the theater how they should operate or what, what their individual goals should be for their, for the facility. They have a plan. That's probably where this language came from. But again, there is, there is a, a board and a professional staff that runs the theater. And they decide what shows to bring in and what educational series to bring in and what local talent to showcase. All of those decisions are made by that group, not by the city. We don't influence that at all. So, I think a description of the theater and its value to downtown, to the community is appropriate. But I wouldn't want to put the operational stuff in there.
I just picked that up because it was, some of the language was for the library and for the museum. It was a similar tone.
Those are a little different. Those are core city operations.
I'm happy with just listing it in.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Greg, the museum and the library are actually like departments within the city? And that's really what you're saying the difference is versus the Mount Baker Theater being a property asset, but the operations being like a pri, it's really a private?
Right.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the addition of that language?
I, I just have a question.
Yeah.
So, the city owns the land. Mount Baker Theater has a board trustees that run the, the programs. If they wanted to significantly depart from the use, is, I mean, are there any covenants binding to the use of that through the ownership?
Yeah, there's an operational agreement, I believe, that.
So, there's, there is, I mean, there's not necessarily, you know, the city's not involved in the running of it, but they do have covenants protecting the use of it.
We help fund some of the programs there, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think having, you know, the introductory statement in there, since, you know, there is, the city does have a vested interest in maintaining that use and it is a cultural amenity and a great, you know, it's a great venue for, for this community. It's unique. I think the description would be very appropriate in this chapter.
Thank you.
Tom?
I would third that.
Okay, if there's another discussion, I think, I don't think we need to have a motion on this one because it seems pretty, there's some consensus on it. So, unless there's additional comment or, you know, opposition, I think we could just look at, for head nods that we could add that introductory statement. And I think that's all around. So, Greg, thank you for clarifying all that for us and Phyllis for drafting that. Okay, well, that makes me feel bad because I was the only one who had a bunch of stuff to talk about and rant and rave about my, my own issues. Good job, everybody else. I think with that, we're, we're done with the comment tracker and I'd like to thank staff for doing that. It's very helpful. Oh, wait, maybe we're not done with the comment tracker. Jeff?
So, I missed a meeting at one point and I wasn't sure exactly whether this was a separate process. But there were near 50 pages of public comments that came in. And I didn't know, was there a tracker that showed what changes staff made? Like a similar highlighter or some other version that addressed changes that you made in response to the public comment?
Well, at any time there was a particular public comment, I mean, there, there was a lot of overlap in what you said and what they said. I mean, you clearly listened to what the public had to say. So, any, when there was a specific recommendation, I referenced the planning commission tracker for the actual change.
Okay, I just want to confirm that wasn't another document floating around that I didn't pay attention to.
No, there was one that you all have not discussed. Let me see.
In our tracker or in the public?
No, in the public tracker.
Pardon me.
Number 88. Jeff Kochman. He recommended a change to, well, he actually recommended a new policy. So, we are supporting that and I should have just added it in exhibit A. But it says, consider allowing flexibility in urban village zoning where housing goals can be met within an area most suited for such use due to topography, lesser traffic, reduced noise, view opportunities, and other characteristics conducive to housing. Do you see it on page 44?
Hmm. That's proposed new policy language?
Yes.
That you, that staff supported?
Yes. He, his language was slightly different.
Where, where's that in the exhibit?
I, I did not.
I don't think it is.
Add it to the exhibit because you all haven't discussed it, so I was going to bring that up tonight.
Do you, I.
Go ahead.
So, do you, do you know what Mr. Kochman was referring to when, when he's saying allowing flexibility? Consider allowing zoning flexibility in urban village zoning? So, what exactly is, I mean, you think the intent is there? That seems just a little unclear to me.
Well, he, when I've talked to Mr. Kochman, and he represents Barkley Village, they would like to have more flexibility in their zoning to cite uses where they believe it makes sense rather than having subareas carved out and saying this area is going to be industrial, this area is going to be residential, and this area is going to be mixed use. He thinks all of the urban village plans would benefit from a little more flexibility than, than that circumstance.
So, in the drafting of an urban village, you know, I guess, because Barkley's not an adopted urban village right now, right?
Well, there's an adopted plan. It's not called an urban village plan. But they do have an adopted plan that carves out subareas and, and uses that are allowed in the different parts of the village.
Doesn't that seem?
Sorry, I'm just trying to get, figure out, what are the, what are the current restrictions that more flexibilities needed? You know, like, say, when the Fountain District Urban Village Plan was drafted or Old Town, you know, where you have soil conditions and things like that. I just, I just don't see a clear recommendation on what that really means, flexibility. What does that mean?
Yeah, it, it is unclear. We agree it is unclear. And we do try and, when we're doing urban village planning, as you know, we do try and create zoning that has, that has flexibility. And we do look at the characteristics of the land when trying to decide what the allowed uses should be. So, you know, this policy suggestion sort of reflects what we already do. I know Jeff would specifically like sort of a blank check in terms of zoning so that he could cite uses wherever he thinks they, or they think they're appropriate rather than what the plan says. And that's, that's the kind of flexibility that he's looking for.
Well, right now, like you said, right now Barkley's got different areas within the neighborhood, right, that are for different things?
Right.
And so, if they did a plan, they could, through the plan process, they could.
They could.
Create, just like we've done with the other urban villages, create like a broader range of uses. When he spoke at the podium, I remember he was talking about, it felt like he was talking about industrial, where he was saying that, you know, I think he said like, our, our uses are office, corporate office type stuff and more than industrial. And it sounded like he was, this sounds like it's about housing, but when he was at the podium, it sounded like he was talking more about making sure that, like, they could put the kind of, the kind of business uses that they're currently getting into their industrial. That's what my recollection was, but that, then this doesn't really speak to that. So, I'm a little, I'm a little confused too, Jeff?
I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think it's worth acknowledging that that's a single owner development.
Yeah.
And so, they're not, you know, you don't have the city arbitrating between completing land uses on one block versus the neighboring block or whatever. And so, I understand the ask and I think that could be accommodated. But I wouldn't try to make a blanket statement where all of a sudden you were putting all the zoning in a blender for all the urban villages and throwing everything on the table because that's a whole different scenario. So, I, I would support it if it was specific to Barkley and that, that's just a special case. And they're dealing with a build-out over a long period of time. They've had Heath Techna out there as a industrial right next to my orthodontist, right next to a movie theater, you know? So, that's a whole different kettle of fish. And I, and I could certainly see offering them some flexibility as long as it's acceptable planning department, but leaving it there.
I, yeah, I, the way I read this is, consider allowing flexibility in urban village zoning. So, I interpret that as being the uses that are allowed under that zoning designation. That's what I see that they're driving as, you know, if you have a, if you have an urban village zoning designation, that there's an increased number of uses, of flexible uses that you can do in those areas. That probably is appropriate in the Barkley District, you know? And I, I would like to hear, you know, staff's response to just how, how that, how a policy like that could be implemented. They have to make an urban village plan, right, to have, to, to be a designated urban village?
Yeah, they would, they would produce the plan and bring it to the city for review and adoption, yeah.
So, wouldn't the, I mean, the language meet the intent of what this gentleman is driving at by saying that, you know, consider flexibility that's unique to the Barkley Urban Village Plan when proposed? You know, something along those lines? I think it's just acknowledging that it is a unique, they have, they actually have tools available at their disposal to do something pretty unique there because of some single ownership opportunities, which is definitely unique in, in the city. And so, I, I would, I would support a policy that would give them more flexibility to, to be creative and, and accomplish, you know, housing goals. I'm just wondering if that, the way this is drafted, I don't, I don't see it as being clear what the intent is.
I don't, I don't think so either.
I would just like to add though, like in Fairhaven, which is referenced here, there might be a different zoning for each block. I mean, it's really chopped up. It's a quilt. It's not a, it's not overall. And I, and what I read here is the person, instead of having predetermined what this block and that block and some other block would be, is that these are the general things that we'd like to look at within a neighborhood. And then, when the developer comes in to do something on a particular piece of property, they have more flexibility other than what somebody has predetermined that that corner is going to be. So.
Lisa?
I remember going through a year of the Sandwich Way Urban Village Design Plan and all the public meetings and all the input and all the sticky notes and going through that whole process. And I valued how we have transitional zones and we have areas for the higher density and that there are certain specifications based on what's appropriate for a. And I valued how we have transitional zones and we have areas for the higher density and that there are certain specifications based on what's appropriate for a specific site. And I get a little uncomfortable with the vague language with the flexibility, because again, Barkley is very unique. And so it would be equitable there. But to apply it across the board to all urban villages, I would just be concerned about undoing all of that input to allow flexibility for a quarter block for one development, because it's in the comp plan that we're allowing flexibility. So I would hate to think, you know, the transition zone that we have at the corners of the urban village, somehow now it's going to become something else and because we're being flexible. Because it was a massive public process to identify what is appropriate based on the uniqueness of the area. And I think the urban village plans allow certain types of flexibility with what goes within those specific. So I don't know why we would actually need this.
Yeah.
I actually, I actually agree with you to a certain degree. The master plan that they go through will, ostensibly, they could come in for a master plan and say, "We would like commercial, industrial, residential zoning across the whole urban village."
Good.
And that process would be vetted out through the master plan. And I'm just reading, there's a policy, the first policy under, in the land use chapter, Foster Vibrant Urban Villages, says, "The urban village designation encourages the creation of intensely developed mixed-use areas." And then it goes on to say, "The ultimate mix of land uses should be established in a master plan." And then in the housing chapter, it says, "Support high-density and mixed commercial residential development in the city's urban villages." So I almost think like, what he's concerned about is already in these chapters and, and the details play out, like Lisa said, in that planning process. Just my thoughts. I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary either. As, as already been stated, Barkley is really unique, being under one ownership. They're not gonna cut off one hand to spite the other. So, you know, they're not gonna put a meat rendering plant out there in the middle of the thing. They're going to develop so that the new development does not adversely impact what's already there. And when you've got separate ownerships of little pieces of, of a block, you've got tension. And, and then, you know, you, you can't have that immense flexibility that, that is available to Talbot.
Yeah. Well, is, is there general consensus regarding this, that maybe it isn't a necessary policy? Garrett, do you, no? Does everybody feel okay with that? Okay, I think that we don't want to include that. Thank you. Okay, so that, Jeff, does that kind of also, did the comment Lisa made before answer your question about how the public comments were incorporated?
Yeah, I think we dispatched with our one public comment that was under consideration.
Perfect. So, okay, so really all that's left to talk about is anything that's within this exhibit A. And I'm sure we all want to get more information on the ADU item. Lisa, right? And there may, I was gonna say, there may be others. And so I have a feeling that we could probably, it might make sense to peel through the other ones first and just finish with a bang on the ADU stuff, just like last week. So if you'd like to just lead in with an item you've got a comment or question on, and then if anybody else also has one in here, please just let me know and we'll move to the next one.
Promise, last one until ADU for me. Last week I had mentioned, because we had received a handout from, and I'm, I'm trying to remember his name, is it Moshe? Moshe, sorry for mispronouncing. But I had brought up that, looking through that section, I didn't identify, I believe my comment was where timely and proper notification of when, like hazardous utilities are being worked on. An example was when they're digging up a Cascade natural gas line in a neighborhood and a neighbor not knowing that they were in process of doing that. And they found out when they went out on the street to find out what was going on, and they had small children in the house. And because they were very close to that proximity, they didn't feel safe, and so they left for the day. And they had commented it would have been nice to have been notified that this work was happening on a gas line. And he had mentioned that he would come up with something, and I didn't see that. Was that accomplished?
Yeah, that's
Or did I miss it?
That's because we, we looked at the franchise agreements that the city has with Cascade Natural Gas and Puget Sound Energy. And that's, those circumstances are covered in those franchise agreements in terms of what they're supposed to do when they're doing maintenance. They are supposed to notify people. What happens in, in the case of an accident, that's all covered in the, in the franchise agreements and they're supposed to have, and they do have plans for how they handle those circumstances where they have, where an accident might occur. So we didn't think a policy was necessary since those are covered by those franchise agreements.
Lisa, I, I think Moshe got confused on who the comment was originated from, because I got sent a copy of that franchise agreement. I think maybe he was thinking that, that I had generated that comment. And I don't know that, I had assumed that it got distributed to everybody. I did read through it. They do have those provisions for emergency protocols. There was, I noticed in the Cascade Natural Gas, some instances where they need to respond and they have to rely on 911 and emergency services to try to notify neighbors. It may not always get to people, you know, in time if the contact isn't available, but they do have those procedures in place. I mean, but they also have to respond within a certain period of time to try to address the problem that could be a safety issue. So I thought, from what I saw, I thought it was pretty well covered in there, but it doesn't sound like that got around.
I don't think I got that.
We'll make sure to send that to you tomorrow.
Also, I think number sixteen on, other pages aren't numbered, but if you look at number sixteen, it looks like you guys changed the language on that a little bit. That's within the exhibit A. And I don't know if that's the same issue. This is on exhibit A of the findings of fact. Number sixteen. Looks like we added a little bit to that. Was that a different issue or that to speak, it almost seems like that's trying to speak to what you were talking about.
I think, yeah, that was Moshe's attempt to try to incorporate
Some of those concerns into the policy.
Into an existing policy.
Existing policy.
I mean, anything beyond that's probably not really a comp plan policy issue. That's why we reference the franchise agreements.
What do you think? All right. I think we should talk about one thing. Does anybody else have a specific item within here? Garrett?
Uh, well, no, go ahead. I, more just process.
Process? I just, there's a note from staff on items nineteen to twenty, the policies T-11 and T-12. And I don't know if that came from Chris Como. Looks like it might have, kind of suggesting that our idea to substitute require for encourage was not a good idea.
That is correct.
And I actually, I, I kind of, I kind of heard, hear what Chris is saying here. We have a rule and, what Chris is saying is we have a rule in place that says you do a certain thing. And so saying the word require is really, it's really consistent with our rules. Is that kind of his suggestion?
Yes, it was Chris. He said it was the entire public work staff that supported his little note there. Alan Mariner always, also made a comment on it as well.
So I, that, that rings with me, because I think it's a fair argument to say we have a rule in place. You know, encouraging people to comply with the rule is not really, doesn't make sense. My, my issue with these, Garrett, I know this was kind of your original comment. My issue with these was the words "all-new development", not "require" or "encourage", but "all-new development". Because if we say "require" all-new development, what does that mean? Does that mean single-family homeowners are gonna have to put sidewalks in front of their houses and bike lanes? And I think we had a brief discussion about that at the last meeting, but I'm curious what staff would say. If we, if we went back to "require", and I want to build a single-family home on my property, that's new development, would I be obligated to construct a sidewalk along my frontage if there wasn't one? And/or construct a bike lane, bike lane if I abutted an arterial street?
I don't know. Chris isn't here to answer that question.
Darn it. That's my biggest concern, that this would set the stage for really some onerous improvement requirements for single-family homeowners. Jeff?
Well, it also raises the issue is, are we, are we drafting and approving a comp plan to just simply comply with existing rules? Or are we coming up with the big picture of how things should be and the thought being that the rules get adapted to that? That's just, something that runs me a little bit the wrong way. But that said, you know, the rules could change over the next few years. And so I, it seems that the less specific the plan is in terms of "require this" or "do that", unless it's a very strong policy feeling that it's a, a broad thing that should be implemented, we shouldn't use highly specific language like "require". We should, we should finagle that a little bit to express a policy preference or to do something else. That, just my side comment. I don't really have a dog in this particular fight, but I understand what you're saying. It just seems like that's an issue.
Garrett?
I just think it almost doesn't even need to be in the comprehensive plan. If it's, if there's, or if there's regulations saying that this is required, you have to comply with building regulations. So I would maybe make a suggestion, just to, instead of saying "all-new development", just say "require applicable development". You know, so that's saying that if there's regulations in place, they apply to those developments. Because I understand the intent is that, you know, that, that pedestrian master plan and the bicycle master plan, you know, so sidewalks, bike lanes are very important. And we want to see those constructed throughout the city. That's how cities are built, you know, your development goes and they do their share of the, those improvements and everybody benefits from them. They're in the right of way and they're maintained by the city. I just don't know that we need to say "all-new development". We could just say "require applicable development".
Jeff?
You could actually just rephrase this, and I'm just doing that five, just to, to support the, support the plans or the community's, whatever, objectives for bicycle transportation, you know, that.
Another way to do it, yeah.
And then at that point, just say, you know, the, the code requirements will
Meet code requirements.
Yeah, just like one simple sentence.
Support the bicycle master plan, the pedestrian pedestrian plan.
Because then you're supporting it on a policy level. It's a directing clients with the rest of the activities down the stream and you don't have to get in a tangle.
I, I agree. That would be more appropriate. It's a policy document. These seem like they're regs. And regs should be in the applicable, you know.
I would say that the Transportation Chapter already does include the policies specifically referencing the bike and ped plans and that this is a policy supporting our code. And my understanding from Chris is that this is a citywide policy that is not going to change anytime soon.
Maybe we should just leave it as we had changed it to say "encourage" because that's less specific. I didn't mean to kind of stir the pot on it, but, yeah, maybe we should just leave it as is.
Yeah, I, it just seems like, it seems like it's just referencing a code. If, if our comprehensive plan referenced a, a building code, it'd be eight hundred pages.
Yeah.
We could take out the reference to the, the code and then it's truly a policy without referencing the code. And Chris likes to show where, where the requirements are. He's a little bit more technical in the way that he writes, so that's why you'll see that throughout the chapter.
Well, the question remains, if you do a single-family house or if you put an ADU on an existing lot, are you gonna build a bike lane? You know, that's, that's still there. That's all new development. So the issue is there is, it's too sweeping. And if we don't know that it actually, you know, if a store gets a building permit, now, who knows?
I don't think you're too far off on that, where we should depart completely from this conversation, because I think it should just, I mean, I think if, the word "require" is fine to me. Require applicable development, that means that the code designates which developments, and they do right now, not all developments require sidewalk curb and gutter improvements. Single families exempt. So there are exemptions.
That's actually a good idea to address the issue.
Just require applicable development. So you're saying you're supporting the policy of adding these amenities. So.
So just an answer to your question, ADUs, you do not have to build the abutting sidewalk when you develop an ADU?
Under current code.
Under current code.
Yeah, and so I look at, you know, you look at policy language and that's sort of the mechanism for changing ordinances and changing codes, is that the comp plan guides those changes. So if it's saying "require all-new developments", that's just sort of sweeping. It's, I feel too general and it may not be appropriate for all, all of our goals. I think there's some conflicting interest there. I think Jeff hits on that real good.
What if you said "require new development to construct sidewalks on all public streets abutting private property per city standards where applicable"?
Sure.
I don't know. I mean, I just, maybe I'm getting down to the weeds too much on this.
It just, but what if it's a significant renovation and you're renovating seventy percent of an existing building, you know? I just think the code should determine who does those, those improvements.
So just require applicable development?
Applicable development to construct sidewalks. And then the code would designate who, who does that.
Is that a change you're recommending?
Yeah, I make a motion to go back to "require", take out "all-new development" and put "applicable" in both places on T-11 and T-12.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. The motion is to replace, to go back to the word "require" but replace "all-new" with "applicable" in both policy T-11 and T-12. Is there any other discussion on this? Lisa?
I don't disagree, but I don't like the construct of the sentence. It's awkward.
That's why I tried to flip it to the end, yeah.
I'm not a grammar expert by any means, believe me. You can, you can make an amendment to make that more appropriate.
It should be, I mean, it's either at the end of the sentence or it's an introductory clause instead of in the middle.
Yeah.
Because it's too awkward. Does planning have a suggestion where to insert?
Where to insert what?
Basically the words where applicable.
When applicable or where applicable?
Oh, okay, so it would be require, I thought it was require applicable, as opposed, oh, you don't like where applicable. Maybe just say where applicable at the beginning, where applicable, comma.
Require.
That's constructed much, that is, I'm about to use bad English myself.
Beginning or end is probably where we'd put it.
Beginning or end is more appropriate for constructing the sentence.
Let's do that then. That's the motion as amended.
Yeah, I think it reads better at the beginning. I agree with you. Okay, so I'm gonna restate it real quick. So the, the proposal is to change policy T-11 and T-12 to say, "Where, where applicable, require development"
Yes.
To construct, and then "where applicable" require development to construct bike lanes. So that's the motion on the table. Is there any other discussion on that? All right, I think we should have a vote since it was a motion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Tom, one. One opposed. So that moved five to one. Yes. He wanted, he wanted that at the end, is what happened. He wanted that where applicable at the end of the sentence. Okay, so I, I think unless anyone else has any specific issues within the exhibit, and it looks like Phyllis, you have a comment.
Well, I'd like to go back and revisit the inclusionary zoning that I noticed staff does not agree with our recommendation to remove that. And maybe I need to understand how staff is looking at inclusionary zoning. I could see it as optional, but ma, but I just want to make sure it's not mandatory. It, it would be number eight.
I think by definition it's mandatory. If you do it, it's a man, that make, that's what inclusionary zoning is.
Well.
Right?
Right, it's a regulatory tool. However, I did go back and look at the sources that we sent out before. And I note that in Kirkland, for example, they have inclusionary zoning specifically, oh, no, sorry, in, in Kenmore. They have it specifically just for their downtown. And then in Red, Redmond, they do that in just certain neighborhoods. So it doesn't have to be citywide for a certain zoning district. You can specify in certain areas.
And it, it could be part of a negotiation. If somebody on the south side wants to amend something and put in a taller building, more housing, and it looks like it could be supported by the city, this is a tool that could say, you know, we'll give you that additional density if.
Well, we do that now. We have quite a few incentives related to that. The difference with this is that it, it's regulatory, but you could still offer like a density bonus, but it's tied to the regulation. That's how it's different.
Like multifamily tax exemption, for example, is tied to affordable housing component. So you get it, but you, you have to provide that.
Right.
Yeah, similarly.
It's optional, it's voluntary, yeah.
Yeah. Jeff?
So not to tangle into this too far, but if that got, the bullet got So, not to tangle into this too far, but if that got, the bullet got changed to voluntary inclusionary zoning, would that remove the staff objection? No, you want it mandatory.
No, we, we don't know what we want. We don't know that it's an appropriate tool. Uh, it's one of a list of tools that might be appropriate at some point in the future. We would like the ability to consider it. We don't know if it would be mandatory or optional. We don't know if it would be applicable just in the downtown or to other areas. All of those issues would have to be addressed as we change our codes to require this. So, there would be a whole process that we would go through to figure out the details. It's just one of a number of tools that, uh, we would like to be able to consider at some point in the future.
Well, it's just a wee bit irritating because I'm not sure, sure, so sure that it's been proven effective in many communities, particularly in the Bellingham circumstances, but that's just my opinion. And so here we, here we have this thing where we've hashed through something and we come up with something and this goes forward as, nah, they're wrong. It's been proven effective in many communities. And so it's just rubs me the wrong way again.
We're not saying you're wrong. We're saying that we have documentation that proves that, that it's effective elsewhere and that, um, the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, for instance, says it's likely to play a significant role in our national housing strategy in the coming decade. And that many communities are, you know, they need to take full advantage of every tool that's out there.
Garrett?
Can you give us, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, can you give us an example of how that would be triggered? In other words, I'm going to put in twenty units or a hundred units or, you know, a duplex or fourplex. How would this be triggered or when could it be triggered?
Again, we don't know the details at this point, Phyllis. I, I just, I, I guess when I see the, the staff note, I, I think it's sort of cajoling, you know, city council in one position or another, instead of really giving a fair representation of what the benefits perceived or otherwise are, benefits or negative impacts. Because it just says has proven effective in many communities. It reads very dismissive and it doesn't necessarily provide any empirical evidence that it is successful and that it is a good tool, because you could find a lot to the contrary saying that it's not a successful tool in, in addressing affordable housing issues.
Well, I apologize if it came off that way. I was very briefly summarizing the longer statement that we had in the comment tracker, which does include links and information that you can go to, to read more about it.
Maybe that would be the appropriate reference. So, the idea would be that a council member, if they wanted to get vetted on this issue, could do some research and do some homework and not be pushed one way or the other. Simply a recommendation by the planning commission and staff, it's implied that staff doesn't agree with it because they had it in there originally. I don't know that the specific distinction needs to be made.
And I'm not sure why we're talking about it. I mean, you guys made this decision.
Yeah, I'd like.
I don't know why we're talking about this. We're probably not going to agree and, and so this is your recommendation. Let's let it go forward.
Well.
I, I guess my only thing was just how it's presented.
Yeah, I think what Garrett's, I, I agree, Greg. And I was going to ask, I'll ask in a moment if there's a motion to change this, but, um, I think what Garrett's saying is that when staff puts a comment in our exhibit contradicting it, it kind of takes away from our recommendation. And I, is that what you're getting at?
Absolutely.
Why, why is there a note that staff disagrees? The fact that staff doesn't have it in their original, you know.
Implied.
Chapter implies that you disagree and it is, uh, maybe, and we might run into this issue with the ADU comment as well. It's kind of implied, I don't know. I, I get what you're saying.
The only reason the note is in there is to identify the one, I mean, all of these we've, we agreed to.
You have agreed, yeah.
There are a couple that we don't. And so that was why the note was there, just to identify for council those areas where we, we weren't able to reach agreement. That's all.
Then, you know, I, I, I encourage providing a reference to, uh, information on this, whether it be in support or against. I would, I would like to see that format changed, just say, you know, simply say that, uh, staff does not agree. If you, if you, if you feel like the note is a distinction, then just leave it at that. Or more information can be, uh, found and, and you could provide links and websites. Let people educate themselves.
Perhaps a, a less, um, I don't want to say pointed because it's really not the right word I'm trying to grasp, but perhaps, uh, just rephrasing that to, um, not feel that there's a, um, I guess more pointed. But, planning commission, uh, voted to eliminate, you know, five to two or whatever the vote, inclusionary zoning, um, or, you know, and then for more information on, um, inclusionary zoning and where it's been effective in cities. And perhaps if you could find someplace that maybe hasn't been successful, um, then provide those links there. So, basically you're, you're identifying that we didn't agree to it versus that you didn't agree with our elimination.
I, I have, I have a way to do it. I'm going to make a motion on this. I would just make a motion that staff adds a note that staff, that says staff recommends keeping inclusionary zoning as a bullet point, period.
There's a motion on the table. I'll second that motion. Let's have some discussion. Jeff?
I mean, part of the, this isn't just about inclusionary zoning. This is about how our communications are forwarded to council.
Yes.
And what happens. And I, I think in that context, you know, what, what I guess is really getting me is that I think we had a fairly thorough discussion involved in this and it's not getting represented to council. It's getting dismissed. And I think, you know, our discussion included acknowledging that the staff had provided those links and, and also discussing, we have a unique housing market here where affordability is a real issue and the pushing up baseline housing costs in order to accommodate, uh, capital affordable housing, you know, is cross purposes, there are a number of issues, number of concerns we had. We kind of chewed it a little. Well, that chewing doesn't get forwarded to council unless we act as lobbyists and go try to replicate that conversation to them. And I would think that maybe this isn't in here. Maybe, um, just process wise, a fairer thing to do would be to have this be the planning commission recommendations, have a staff report that goes to the council that says there were, um, there were two, three areas where staff disagrees with these recommendations. Planning commission discussed this, said this, we believe professionally this, whatever. But at least giving a voice to the conversation we had. And it just feels like we're getting a bit slighted here. And so I, there's got to be a better way to do this other than this. And I don't want to pick on staff because that's not what this is about. It's more just, you know, here we're working, trying to transmit things to council and we have digested this stuff. And I just hope that goes forward to council, um, at some point, other than just staff disagrees. So, that's my only comment. You know, it's not specific to the motion because I don't know that's specific to this particular thing.
It wasn't our intent to slight the discussion that we've had. And if, if that's the way you read it, then, then let's change it because that was not our intent. And if you want to just identify the fact that we, in this document, that we, these were the areas where we didn't come to agreement, that's fine. And, and just so you know, the council, when they get this, will get all of the minutes. I know some of them are watching these meetings. So, they'll, they'll get a sense of the discussion that we had, I think. But it was not our intent to slight the discussion that we had or to disparage your recommendations. So, let's take out the other language and say this is an area where we didn't reach agreement.
Well, that, that's fine. It's just that the minutes are fairly, they're concise. They don't really capture a lot. And, you know, if, if our concern, for example, was that there was a potential for inclusionary zoning to actually, in the interests of, of providing capital affordable housing, actually exacerbate lowercase housing affordability, that's actually a real issue that was the crux of what we talked about. And that's not transmitted in the minutes, I'll bet you. And you'd have to sit there and watch the whole planning commission. So, I'm just trying to figure out, how do you actually provide this information to council so they understand what we wrestled with and what, how we came to that recommendation? Because that's not contained in any other way, unless they happen to be watching right now, which I won't count on.
It's a dynamic, it's a dynamic issue and a portion of that burden lies on the council members to be paying attention to what we're saying. And if they choose not to, that's their choice. I wouldn't agree with that. I think that they should be at least considering the time that is spent by this body evaluating these issues. A, a portion of it may lie in staff's responsibility, whether there is one or not, I don't know, to present our position. Uh, Greg, I, I think if we, if we left it like a simple sentence like Garrett said, but I, I don't know, when you guys present to council, I mean, there's a certain part of what Jeff's saying that's true. It's like, it'd be nice if staff said, on these particular few, there's only a few. We agreed on so much, on these few issues of disagreement, and here's a little bit of background, just in case you didn't watch all the videos, council, on why. I mean, is that something that staff can, can kind of commit to? And not, not sell it for us, just share with them our, you know, the issues that we brought up as a part of the discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, um, you know, we could identify this as one of the issues that we didn't agree with and will provide a summary of the discussion that we had and the concerns that you've raised about inclusionary zoning. Would that be appropriate?
I, I feel like that would be helpful because I, I, otherwise we are relying on them to be paying a lot of attention and they probably are, but you never know.
We'll do that.
Is that?
So, how we, we have a motion on the table about rewrite, redrafting how the notes are presented. Mine was specific to just one. I would encourage an amendment to the motion that addresses all of them because we have a few, you know, ADUs. We have, you know, a few where there's just not an agreement or consensus amongst staff or the planning commission. I have no problem, I mean, I think it's the staff's responsibility to, to say, you know, to distinguish that there is a, not a consensus there, but I think it should be, it shouldn't be leading in any way.
So, I don't think you can amend your own motion?
I'm, I'm asking.
No, I know, I don't, I don't think procedurally you're allowed to. So, I will propose an amendment to the motion on the table that in any instance where there is a disagreement, and there are only a couple, and maybe when we're done, there might only be one. Um, but in any instance where there is, staff notes that in the exhibit and then provides, as Greg suggested, a brief summary.
I, I guess, I mean.
Well, before we discuss it, I, I guess I just didn't state a motion really, but.
You have no, at that point, you have no control or no review of how that's presented. You're just, you're, it's, it's again, open. So, I think it needs to be clear that where you have, you know, a disagreement in ideas, that it should either not be referenced at all or, or if it is, that it should be done in a predictable way. Otherwise, how, how do you know how it's going to, how it's going to be presented?
I guess that's what I was suggesting, is it should be predictable. It should just be one sentence, like Greg said, just staff does not agree with this. And then the, the, the opportunity is then provided for them to kind of tell council why.
Okay, is my, okay, uh, the, yeah, and I would recommend having it that just the staff, to put it in a positive format, staff recommends as written, as originally written, before the red, before the strike through. That's it. This is exactly what is, reality is implied. Staff would recommend as previously written. And that would apply to all, all the, all the areas that there's disagreement.
Without this, without us trying to summarize the reasons the commission.
I would hope that. If we do that.
For this document, but our hope would be that when you take it to council, you actually affirmatively present what we discussed and why we made that recommendation as well as why you professionally disagree, instead of just presenting your disagreement. And so that doesn't, that isn't to get pulled into this. I'm just having this conversation so we can all nod that maybe this is what we hope to get.
Is that something that even requires a motion? Do, do you think? I mean, we can just ask you, it's like a note in the document. We can just ask you to change it the way Garrett suggested and, and then. I think what Jeff's asking for is just, I, I know it's very difficult for staff because you're in the position of presenting your opinion and then you also have to present the planning commission's recommendation to council. So, you get to wear two hats. And I think all Jeff is saying is, you know, on those specific items where we, where we differ in opinion, um, make sure you put on our hat too.
And, you know, it may be appropriate in this instance for, for you to be there, Ollie, and, and talk about those two or three things where we disagree.
I would rather you guys do it, to be honest. I, I wasn't super comfortable when I had to do that at the, at the last go around on the, on the growth projection. And I felt like there was a certain level of dismissal of, of that, not by staff, by the council, and I was very uncomfortable. And it was, and it was, took a lot of my time and I, and I, I'm just being honest.
Sure.
I think, I think it's not that much to ask. There's only a few things for, for staff to say this, what Jeff, exactly what Jeff said. We disagreed, they thought this, we thought this, here's why. At least then they know and.
We'll do that.
That's just my preference. Okay.
I, I just want to understand, so it's going to be, uh, no, I don't want to get too detailed, but there is a, a, the last bullet point was in addition that staff doesn't necessarily address as supporting or not supporting. So, the public private partnerships for shared parking facilities, wetland mitigation, regional stormwater. So, there wasn't a, a clear position on whether you supported the inclusion of that or not. It doesn't matter, but I guess I say, if you say as originally written, that would eliminate that additional comment.
I think in this particular instance, what we would say is that we, we, um, recommend, the staff recommended, um, or staff recommends leaving the reference to inclusionary zoning in the policy.
Okay, so that would be well stated.
Just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting up with that, uh, discussion.
No, now let's talk about ADUs since we're having so much fun.
And just so you know, another factor in me not wanting to do that, Greg, is that it's, I feel a little bit uncomfortable standing up and representing six, seven individual opinions and trying, and feeling comfortable. And I know that's hard for you too, but I guess maybe I'm punting, like, you know, it's, it's hard to get up there and say, yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of everybody.
Well, why did we make you king then?
And part of that too is.
I'm just supposed to be running this. I'm not supposed to be representing your opinions.
And part of that is too, it wasn't an unanimous vote.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it would be hard for him to sit there and because it.
That's a very good point.
It wasn't completely supported by the whole commission.
It might be easier for staff to present that dynamic, yeah. So, anyway, sorry, Greg. Let's move on to ADUs and I think that's kind of the last, last item. So, we received this policy. Do you, do you guys kind of want to talk about that? This, this, not policy, this, uh, comment from legal?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think the, the crux of the matter is the change in the policy where there is an assumption that there's going to be, uh, an inventory at some point, or that the city's going to go out and, and find all of the ADUs that are out there is, is probably not correct. And, you know, we'll, we'll, those, those units will be identified either through the, you know, the rental registration program or through the complaint process if we get one. But we can't, we can't go and knock on people's doors and ask them if they have ADUs or we can't access someone's property without their permission. So, we didn't want anyone to read this policy language as the, the city was going to affirmantly go out, affirmatively go out and inventory all of our neighborhoods and find all of the ADUs that are out there already. And so that was the concern, I think.
I, I have a thought on this because I see a hundred percent where the challenge is. It's all in how you interpret inventory. When I proposed inventory, it's acknowledging the public input that we get, where people say, hey, we want to know what's out there. I'm not anticipating the city going out and, and getting a to the detail, accurate, you know, in the inventory of type, location, illegal, nonconforming. There's a lot of variables here. I was saying in general, does the York neighborhood have two, which may be permitted? Or does it have thirty? So, just a general feel. So, maybe we need to reword that so it's saying that we want to evaluate and get a general feel for what kind of ADU units are in existence, whether permitted, illegal, legal, nonconforming. So, we're making decisions based on what's really out there, not, not just what we know has been permitted. So, we, we may need to rework, reword that.
Tom, do you have a comment? And then maybe Jeff and Lisa, I know you both want to.
I, I would just support, you know, having jackbooted thugs go banging on doors.
We're not allowed to do that according to our legal department. Jeff and then Lisa?
Well, I'm a little disappointed that, that, that this got jumped to immediately, that it was a Gestapo approach. I think when we talked about this, it was more, you know, talk to the neighborhood associations. Um, you could just walking down some alleys, you could probably tell where there are double meters, where you don't have anything on the books that it's actually not, shouldn't be double meters there. Just starting to get a sense. Uh, and stepping back for a minute, the overall concern here was, we heard at that meeting that the rental registration, I mean, I asked the question, you know, it's going over three years to do cover the entire city, there's not going to be any timely information on ADUs. And, and Greg had mentioned that they didn't really expect that the rental registration was really. And Greg had mentioned that they didn't really expect that the rental registration was really going to provide an inventory of ADUs realistically. So we heard that, but we also, I think we're talking about the concept that there should be some overview level of density or saturation of ADUs in neighborhoods and of some of this planning information available before the ordinance comes forward, because otherwise it seems like you would be DOA. That is what I thought we were talking about, and I'd like to retain that concept unless there's some really good reason not to, I guess.
Lisa?
I might take a couple of minutes here. I don't think inventory has to jump to that we're going to knock on doors and tell people we're coming in to take a look if they have an ADU. Inventory is a way to store information. So if you get a report that someone suspects that they have a neighbor that has an authorized ADU, you're taking that information, storing it, putting it in a little clicker, put it on a map, we might have that happening. The one thing that I'm really most concerned about is when we started working pretty early on, when it looked like the rental licensing was going to go through, the neighborhoods specifically asked if ADUs could be identified through the process, and it was pretty much no, that was not going to be written in because it was a health and safety, and it would never pass that ADUs could be netted through this process. I've had conversations within the last year where I had asked, when we talked about ADUs, with high-up individuals that, you know, would we be able to find out about ADUs? When you go into a house and it's listed that there's two bedrooms on the Cessers webpage and one bathroom, and now when you go into an inspection, there's four bedrooms and two bathrooms, and you can tell that there's two different living units. And I was told that it would not be necessarily reported unless it was specifically a health or safety issue. And I challenged that because if someone has put in two bedrooms in their basement and a kitchen, and they never had permits, and it was never inspected, to me, that is a safety concern. So would that specifically then trigger where that would be reported? And I got the impression, because there was kind of dance-around conversation, instead of being point-blank, that, but my impression was, was no, unless there was something very obvious, it would not necessarily come up on a report. So then when we're talking about ADUs, it, it's been inferred that this inspection process is going to identify some of these. And I just kind of want to talk about the elephant in the room. When I've tried to be direct and say, will this, basically the inspection system identify ADUs? Yes or no, regardless of a health situation?
I wish Rick were here tonight to talk about this, because he is most intimately involved with the rental registration, but he did provide me with our draft enforcement strategy, and it's draft because we don't have a staff person yet on board. We're in the process of hiring someone to do enforcement for the program. He says that they have identified illegal units through this process so far even. They look at places with multiple addresses, and they're going after those, and there is a database. I mean, we currently have a database of ADUs, and that, what, what you're calling illegal ADUs, they aren't ADUs because we don't have legal detached ADUs, those are illegal units. So, I mean, his tact is that this is due diligence, this is a process that one would go through to possibly permit a unit as an ADU if, if it's able to be brought into compliance as an ADU, and we can provide this a copy to if you'd like to see it. But he says so hundred, so far, he said there are about 400 units in the system that they're gonna go after once we have a staff person on board.
So I, paraphrasing would say that you're currently inventorying possible ADUs in a data system. You're providing an inventory of them, would that be a way of?
Yes, we have a database, yes, for that process.
Why would we want to extract evaluating and inventorying all ADUs? Because we're not, again, when we've had conversations, I don't think anybody's said we're going to knock on doors and do something illegal by going in and saying we want to inspect.
Right.
So you are actually currently inventorying a list of ADUs.
Well, ADUs and illegal units, I mean, that's.
So I, I personally don't see a reason to eliminate that because it's actually a process you're already beginning.
We are, I think that that's one of those terms that's broad enough, it can be interpreted in a lot of different ways. And if we come back later with the ADU ordinance update and you say, well, there's a policy in the comp plan that says that you need to inventory all ADUs, where's the inventory, has it been completed? No, not yet, because we're doing a rental registration program which takes time to implement. We don't have a staff person on board yet to, to implement that. So it's a process that's going to be ongoing for years.
And the risk is that, sorry, the risk from that is that we wouldn't even get an AD ordinance for years because that could prevent us from engaging in the, in the detailed discussion of an ADU ordinance?
It could be seen as that, and then also there's the legal aspect of, we can't go onto someone's private property as we stated, and, and without a, a warrant and look or snoop around. And so, but that's not clear in this, this particular policy, what type of method we would need to use for that. When you say all, to us, that means every single unit.
What if we were to strike the word all?
Or add something in there that's, I mean, you actually just drew a distinction between whether something is an ADU or a.
Illegal unit?
No, I don't want to use the word illegal, I, I would say un, non-permitted. All ADUs and non-permitted dwellings, whatever. But, I mean, that's another option, is maybe it was just a semantic issue that was a misunderstanding. But the point that I was going to make is if you read the whole piece that we put together in context, all it says is update the ADU ordinance with priorities on, and all we're doing is accept, is expressing policy preferences that these things are important as part of developing that ordinance. And I think that's legitimate, I don't see anything there that is going to box you in to doing a particular thing, or doing a particular task, or, or having to do anything other than taking these under consideration as you develop the ADU, the ADU ordinance.
Jeff, I, I agree, I think the first sentence is the most important, and it actually, I, I really, I, we had a big, long discussion about this, wordsmithing this, and the, the reason I like this is because it says, update the city's ADU ordinance. My biggest fear is that we use this inventory as a wedge to stop us from going through the process of updating the ADU ordinance. It needs to be updated, and if we just wait and wait and wait and wait and wait for an inventory, we'll never update it. So I like this policy because it says incorporate that need into the update process, continue with the ADU ordinance, continue with it, but focus our priorities on these things while we do it. So I think that, I think, I felt like this really captured what we need to do, which is keep moving forward with this ordinance and engage in that discussion and have public hearings, which we'll never have on this issue if we don't have an ordinance in process. But focus, make sure that our priorities as we do that are on these things. I completely agree with you, I don't think that if you read it in the full context of what we proposed, it does, I don't know, it does anything wrong, I think it's fine, maybe removing the word all, yeah, I mean, it's simple.
Well, it's not as aggressive, I think that's the point, is the original language that struck out now is a very aggressive staking this position, this is, I mean, the permit, I mean, I, no, my glasses on, but basically, you know, it's a very, you will do this.
You mean the original policy?
The original policy, you're staking that position and then assuming that's going to go forward. And I think what we discussed was, you stake that position, you may kill it. And we're supportive of ADUs, we want to see it happen, but we want to see it happen well, and we want to see it happen with these priorities. And I think that's what we got, and I, and I still feel that way. And I'm just wondering if we can talk this through with staff and somehow get some agreement on going full support forward to something that accomplishes our objectives?
Well, the, I wanted just to clarify, when you said permit, when we say permit, we're talking about those ADUs that are already allowed. We're just setting the policy for, once again, for a code that we have in place. The second part is the part that would be the change, consider allowing detached ADUs in certain neighborhoods. And, and I want to, also wanted to point out that the strike-through language here isn't the modified language I meant to include from the comment tracker, the one that.
You changed it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm, I missed that, the modified language that we had proposed was permit owner-occupied, attached ADUs in single-family, multifamily zones, and consider amending the ADU ordinance to allow owner-occupied detached ADUs in certain neighborhoods. That was the modified language that I would put there and do the strike-through, because that was our original language that we agreed with changing.
Right, and I just didn't want to split hairs, but you know, when you reference that this is, you're basically replicating current code, well, it's current code, but you're also taking a whole new AD ordinance that is going to put everything back on the table again, so. I, I think expressing the policy objectives is a legitimate thing to do in the plan, and I don't know if there are any of those policy objectives, the four bullets that we have there, or even the wording that says, update the city's AD ordinance with priorities on. If, what of those is sticking in your throat that makes it, that this is not a, not a good thing to have in the plan? I guess that's the point-blank question.
I, I guess I have a comment on it, because I think we had a good discussion about what, what we're doing with the ADU ordinance. We're, we're trying to draft policy because we know that the ADU ordinance is getting updated, so we're trying to say, how are we going to approach this update? The public comment is very clear, neighborhoods are very concerned about knowing what's out there. So I think we should change the first bullet point to work with neighborhoods to evaluate an approximate ADU inventory, and that would basically be doing that. If we have to reach out, have some engagement with the neighborhoods, figure out what, what's there. I, I mean, when you're talking about adding density within neighborhoods, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. It's not saying you have to go out and do a scientific GIS approach to it and have it down to the, to the, you know, to the level of specificity, but that could be a change, that could maybe accomplish that.
I caution putting the responsibility of this on neighborhoods, they're not paid, they're volunteers, they have a lot of stuff that they work on, some will step up to the plate and they'll walk street by street, house to house, and try to look at things that would give an indication. Other neighborhoods just don't have that organized labor to go ahead and do that, so it'd be very lopsided. And so I think it's really the city's responsibility to be able to provide that support. It may be more at a snail's pace, neighborhoods could possibly assist, but I think putting it on a neighborhood to be the onus of coming up with that information, I think would be very difficult for a lot of our, our neighbors out there.
Well, my thought on it is that we, we, we need to work towards something, and the ADU ordinance has been, it's been a year now since we first saw it, you know, the, we first talked about it, and we've made very little progress. We've had a, a year to develop some sort of inventory, staff doesn't have the resources to go out and do a full inventory of ADUs. When, when I drafted that language, my intent was that we're going to acknowledge the need to know what's out there. The mechanism of how to do that, I didn't want to be specific about it. So this, I obviously was interpreted as being very specific, and I, I would like to rethink, you know, the intent is just to work with neighborhoods, these are the folks that are coming to the meetings and saying they, they want to have input into the ordinance, which is a very positive thing. I, I think we just need to work to create some general consensus. Now, it's not to say that only the neighborhoods is, is say, well, okay, you got 30 days to get this done, it shouldn't be all on them. But it also shouldn't be all, all on staff, and it, and I can see this is used as being a wedge to say, hey, look, you haven't done this inventory to this nth degree, we're not going to move forward, we're not going to support any kind of meaningful ordinance update.
Well, when it says inventory all ADUs in the city, that's what it means to me, inventory all ADUs in the city.
Yeah, I, I have it.
And I, and I, I agree, and now seeing how that's interpreted, I can see that interpretation, that's realistic. And so I think we need to reword the first bullet point of that to capture the intent, unless I'm mistaken about the intent.
I have a, I have a suggestion for that.
Please.
What, what if it said with priorities on, and the first bullet point was developing a program for identifying ADU density in existing neighborhoods?
According to Rick, we have a program to do that. Um, I, I mean, I think we're talking, all you need to do, I think, really, is just remove all.
Uh, really? But do you think if we did that, th, th, that this wouldn't say staff doesn't agree with the change? I mean, does that, does that get us to some support for this?
I think removing all and also removing attached from the second bullet point, because those are already allowed by code.
And, and I guess that would presume, if we did that, that would presume that as a part of the ADU ordinance, eliminating attached ADUs would be off the table.
I would interpret it as that.
And I'm okay with that, because I think attached ADUs should be allowed, they already are, and I don't think we're going to go backwards with this ordinance, so I'm okay with that change, but I want it to be clear that that change would presume that attached ADUs are allowed, and so the rest of the planning commissioners need to be comfortable with that too, I personally am. I don't think we're going to go backwards, maybe other people think we will.
I don't see any advantage to going backwards.
Lisa?
I'm comfortable with attached, and just about every neighborhood person that I've spoken with, they're comfortable, because in the plan, we're going to be identifying things like dispersion.
Exactly.
And whether, you know, a lot of the details and parking issues, I mean, all the issues that people talk about, that will come up with the plan, so I haven't heard hardly anyone say that an attached ADU should be eliminated from Bellingham as a whole.
I agree, yeah.
So I'm, you know, and I think neighborhoods get a reputation of that, that NIMBY, I don't want it, but I haven't heard that, I've just heard, there's not enforcement, we have quite a bit, we have to know what we have before we just all of a sudden open the floodgates to increasing, whether by number or type, until we have a sense of really what the current impacts are in the neighborhood. I think when that issue comes in, and I, and I do want to leave that first bullet point, because I think that's a really important criteria, and it sounds like if you've already netted possible 400, I mean, that's, you go to the neighborhoods, or you go to city council, or you bring that information forward. When we deal with the ADU ordinance, I think people would be really happy to know that there's a number on the table that has been potentially identified already.
So, I agree, and I don't think the public that we heard from made issue about attached either, I think you're right. Most of the comments we received were about detached, so, but do you, are you, are you suggesting you are comfortable with removal of the word all? Because I think that it, it does provide, it, it addresses the legal issue, right? We, we don't have to, we don't have to say we're going around and knocking on doors, which we're obviously not allowed to do, but it gets the intent, so. It sounds like.
Remove three, three words.
Three words.
And the staff, staff, um.
Maybe.
Staff comment goes away?
What was the third word?
Well, I.
And.
All ADU, the all and attached and.
The only other issue is that it's not in this policy, but once again, we're bringing the ADU ordinance to you eventually.
Yes.
So is the implication there that we are evaluating and inventorying ADUs in the city prior to adoption of the ordinance, with the ordinance?
With, I think the way this is written, it implies with the ordinance.
Because we can't do that. I mean, then we're not adopting an ordinance for many several years.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't give us the third option, would be as a result of the ordinance.
Okay.
Right? So it could be before, it could be with, or it could be as a result of the ordinance, is it?
Maybe, but I thought, I guess it's just, it's a difference perhaps in the scope of what we're talking about. You know, getting some baseline, basic information to inform the decisions that are going to be made in that ordinance seems to be pretty important to me, and so it doesn't have to be everything, but if you don't even, the perception is, is if you don't even know how many ADUs are out there, or they're dispersal or anything else, why are we talking about this? And that's a really tough thing to answer, if you don't even at least have something, it sounds like you do.
We do, we have a database of legal ADUs. We monitor those very closely.
So then it's a matter of starting the database as things come in, as inspections happen, you happen to notice one that's not on your list, and when somebody reports something that's not on the list and it's a suspect, you're just starting to build that information. Because I just see the issue is, when, when the AD ordinance comes forward, if you can't even address what the density really is, I have a hard time asking where it's going to go.
And Lisa, I don't think the suggestion is that we would have all the details from the entire rental registration program to answer your question, it's just, the intent of this bullet would be that we're getting data, we're, we're encouraging data collection, and a priority as a part of the update is on data collection and presentation of that. I mean, I, I'm just throwing ideas out, but maybe, maybe there's the ability. I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out, but maybe there's the ability to look at all of our complaint cases in the tide mark and say, you know, "We've, we had 300 enforcement actions over the past 10 years on illegal ADUs," or something. You know, there's got to be like data sources out there that we could, and I think the intent of this, correct me if I'm wrong, is to encourage the presentation of as much data as we have as a part of this process. I don't know, we don't want to put all that in the policy, but I think that's more where we're going, and this might be more of like a misunderstanding of where the commission wanted to go with this, how far we intended you to take it.
So I'll make a motion to strike "all," "attached," and "and" from the first two bullet points, so it'll reevaluate inventory of ADUs in the city, identify appropriate areas for detached ADUs.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, motions to strike the words "all," "attached," and "and" from proposed policy H7. Is there any other discussion? We've talked quite a bit about it.
As far as staff is concerned, would that make the little note go away? We all agree?
I think so. I'm looking for the sides of me.
And I don't know if we, I mean, personally, I don't, I don't care if the note's there. We've had such a good discussion. What I care about is that the, what Jeff gets at, that the discussion of this, the reasons for why we want this are presented to council.
Well, I think it's nice if we...
It'd be great if it went away and we all agreed.
Have a highlight there.
Well, we should.
A hook.
We should have a consensus. We're going to be working on this ordinance together in a short period of time. We should have an idea of what that means. There's nothing in there that precludes an ordinance being written until said event takes place. There's no prohibitive language. It's just saying it's a priority. It's a priority of our ADU ordinance. So if the staff would feel better, evaluate a general inventory. I'd be okay with that.
No, I really think that the bullets actually cover the original policy as staff wrote it. There's, you know...
I do, too. I do, too.
We're silent on the issue of attached, which is in that policy, and there's a discussion of talking about detached. And so they're pretty consistent at this point, I think, but it's staff's call.
I'd like to see, Phil's had a question on whether or not the note would go away with those proposed changes.
Well, the changes are better.
Thank you, Ray.
Changes are better? What?
Changes are better.
It's an improvement.
What is perfect?
He's being cagey.
Lisa?
I'm just a little concerned that, and I may have misinterpreted the comment, but the assumption that by having this in here, that means that it's going to be a wedge so that the ADU ordinance doesn't come forward. I think we will have a much better ADU ordinance when we have informed decision-making. I think if we don't have informed decision-making, this auditorium is going to be full with a line going down the stairs of people making comments because they want to have the information and assurance that we're going forward with a good policy. I think without that information, we will not achieve a great policy, which I think our neighbors and the city deserves. So I predict that the less information we have when we do bring that ordinance through, and I believe it'll come through, it'll come before us, but I think the less information we have, the more watered down and generic, and maybe we're not going to achieve a very honorable goal of creating better density. I don't want to just say higher density, but just better density throughout the neighborhoods because I think that there will be a lot of opposition because we don't have the enforcement unless that stuff really gets addressed, and I hope it does. But I don't think this modification that we've made means that we're not going to be able to have the AD ordinance come through us. I don't interpret that here at all. And so I would hate to think that there's going to be a negative note that the staff does not support these changes based on a fear that this is a way to bypass having an ordinance come forward in the future.
Chris? Thank you, Lisa.
I'll just add that I would struggle to have a very strong policy. One of the priorities for evaluating the AD ordinance in here being an inventory, and then we bring forward an ordinance without an inventory. This is one of the priorities, is an inventory to begin with. And if we are to bring forward an ordinance without that, I think the public, you know, lacking this conversation here, is going to be accepting of that.
But you will bring forward an inventory, right? You will bring forward inventory. Not a knock-on-the-door inventories, but an inventory that shows what information you have about where the legal ADUs are and what information you have about what's been reported as potential illegal units and what your enforcement status is on rental registration. I mean, I, maybe we're all talking around circles here, but I'm thinking the idea is that you're going to have some information to bring forward with the ordinance. Because if you have no information to bring forward with the ordinance, then yes, we have a problem.
We will, and of course, we will have some information to bring forward for that, but it wouldn't be after an exhaustive...
No.
...search. I guess the other notion is that the adoption of the, or, yeah, the update of the ADU ordinance was going to be one of the tools for the rental registration program so that as those units are out there, they're identified as illegal, it creates one more pathway, potential pathway, for them to come forward and become legal. One of the big discussions that the planning commission had, and also the focus group and such, is that all of the illegal units out there, there's a lot of innocent people out there that are unaware of the situation that they're in, and they are becoming the victims. These illegal units are a source of affordable housing, and where opportunities exist to make these things legal, an update of the infold, of the ADU ordinance would provide an additional tool. So again, I just, I just don't want this inventory to be one of the stumbling blocks to thwart an ADU ordinance coming forward.
I think that's what Lisa was speaking to, to a certain degree, is there's a concern that if there is no inventory, that it will become a stumbling block. It's the opposite, I think, of what you're saying. If there's every, I personally think 80% of the city doesn't care about it, but they're the 80% who doesn't come to the meetings. So if we don't have an inventory, the 20% of the people in our community who do come to the meetings and speak are going to be super angry, and we're going to go nowhere with this thing. And I think that's what you're getting at. Maybe not the percentages, but you know what I mean? The general idea that we got to have that data. Otherwise, we're, you know, we got to have something. We got to have something so that we can make these people who spoke to us for the past 18 weeks about literally this one topic, it's all people came to talk to us about, don't come back angry.
Well, it seems like the word inventory is the real bugaboo here. What about estimating? I mean, that seems to be a softer word. Evaluating and estimating ADUs in the city, which doesn't have quite the same power that the concern would be on inventory, which could be a noun or a verb, but estimating, evaluating and estimating ADUs in the city.
I just think estimating is just, part of it is, we want to know where they are so that we can identify whether or not they could be brought into compliance, or do we have 10 on one block and none on another? And now somebody who owns a house on that block that has 10 wants to build one, and you know, dispersion would be an issue. I mean, we could look at rewriting that sentence to where it's, you know...
Pardon me?
Hopefully identifying something along that. I just had it in my head, and I'll come back to it, but I kept toying around with something else. I would hope that the AD ordinance coming forward, the suggestion from the planning department, is going to have identified, not just, you know, we don't need to necessarily know the exact number, but we need to know that there's going to be a process for inventorying that. Like, this is how we're going to, as we identify this, this is the process we're going to use to evaluate whether or not they could be brought into compliance. You know, are they, you know, where they're located? That is part of the inventorying. But if I was somebody sitting in the bleacher, listening to the overall plan, I would want to know, how are you going to identify them? How are you going to go through the process of determining if they're able to be brought into compliance? How are we going to do enforcement? I mean, those are the primary concerns, and I would hope an ordinance is going to address that. We don't need to know, to come up with an ordinance, the exact number. Knowing what we know currently, and then identifying how we're going to hopefully find out more. Are we going to depend upon the neighborhoods to come forward and say, "My neighbor has one"? Is, realistically, are we going to find out through an inspection process? If not, how are we going to get this information so that as we implement the ordinance, we're going to hopefully make it, you know, make the neighbors happy with the process? I think people are concerned that the information's just not there. So what I hear and what I feel myself is it's really hard to, I want a great ordinance, and I want to be able to use this as one of our tools, is having the ADUs. But I also want to make good decisions on something that I don't want to see revisited two, three years down the line because it's so watered down that it's not effective because we haven't addressed, even if we haven't addressed what's there, how are we going to address that? I think that's really important to come forward with. We could rewrite that first sentence, but personally, I don't mind taking out the "all." And if the thought that that word inventorying you think is going to be a stumbling block, I would just suggest addressing that early on with the information provided to the public by identifying how we're going to collect that information over time and how that process is going to look as we implement it.
You're right.
I'd like to, I'd like, I mean, okay.
Well, I know what you want. Phyllis?
Yeah, I know what you want. Well, I'm just trying to get us through the evening. I mean, I see these others as being, you know, way down the line when we're down and further in the weeds, and since inventory seemed to be a red flag alarm, estimating, I think, is a little softer word that doesn't have some of the same connotations. But there's nothing that precludes the in-depth at some point when appropriate, but we're not writing any of the specific language in there tonight anyway. So evaluating and estimating ADUs in the city seems to be kind of a harmless thing to say that would get us passed.
Well, at this point, there's a motion on the table to remove the words "all" and "attached" and, so if you want to propose changing inventorying to estimating, you'd have to make a motion. We have to have a second. We have to have a discussion to vote on it.
Got it. I would make a friendly motion that we substitute estimating for inventorying.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Well, a second, we have to discuss it, so.
We don't have to, but if you seconded it, it's seconded. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Jeff?
I don't know if it's a semantic issue because you could, you could say estimate or assess or inventory, but I think there's a real difference of opinion here about what we're actually talking about. And I...
Is there?
I think so. Because, you know, I keep thinking, this is like, well, just go for a stroll in some neighborhoods and kind of talk to people, get a feeling of kind of what's out there, and just start getting some things down on paper that are some potential counts or some suspected counts and some estimated densities. Just some way to, coming up with some data to inform the decision as we go forward. Not necessarily hiring a consultant, spending $100,000 doing a GIS mapping system. And I think what I'm hearing is any additional work is not acceptable, or is not doable, or is not something they want to feel committed to do. And I think what we're saying is, you need to have some information that's coming forward, and that's all we're asking for with the AD ordinance. And so either, either planning believes that, yes, it is actually a useful thing to come up with some information at some level to inform the discussion for the AD ordinance, or they don't think it's going, appropriate to get additional information. And if that's the crux of the problem here, I don't think we're going to semantic our way out of it.
Well, I think, I think planning does want to get information. They're already getting information, is what we're hearing. So I don't, I don't necessarily think there's that much, that much difference. It is just a question of how far we go with it. I, I'm not supportive of the change. I like the original motion. I think that it's not our job to figure out how this inventory occurs. It's the council's job. It's the mayor's job. It's the planning director's job, and that'll all shake out as a part of, hopefully, a discussion of the ADU ordinance and preliminary discussions before it gets to us, and the work they're doing with the rental reg. And I just feel like we should set a tone. We think it's important to evaluate this. I like the word inventory, and I, it's not our job to figure out how that happens. It's just our job to say, "We think this should be the policy."
I agree with that.
You know?
I think we should move on and just...
That's kind of how I feel.
In that case, I would withdraw my motion.
Well, we'll call a question on the original question.
Yeah, I think we should call the question unless there's further discussion. Okay, so the motion, I'm going to restate it. We can have a vote. The motion is to strike the word "all" from the first bullet in the policy language and strike the words "attached" and from the second bullet in the policy language and move forward with that. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope, all right. That's six.
Just really quickly, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, no, problem.
This shouldn't be controversial, I wouldn't think, but as we were sitting here going through, I realized that by eliminating, or by modifying H7 in the way that you are, we're removing the part that says, "Permit attached ADUs in single family and multifamily zones." Are you okay with having a separate policy that just says that? Because it didn't seem like that was the issue at all with that policy. The first part of the original policy, permit attached ADUs in single family and multifamily zones, those are already...
Period.
Period. Just, and I think the way that we had modified it, it said owner occupied, so.
I was going to ask if you could include owner occupied in that statement.
So, Lisa, what you're suggesting is just have a separate policy like H8 or H7 and make this H8.
Yes.
And have it say, "Permit owner occupied, attached ADUs in..."
Right. Well, actually, the better way to do it is continue permitting.
Yeah, continue permitting.
Yeah, since we already do it, so that way we don't lose that part of it.
So staff's made a request. Is there any discussion on that?
No, that's already part of our ordinance, part of our policy. It makes no sense. Continue. It's a priority.
Sounds like it's not really going to change. All right, shall we just do head nods that that's okay for them to add that? Okay, yes, thank you, Lisa, for making that point. So I think that's it, unless anyone has any other comments.
I have one final comment regarding the staff's note. I, I get where you guys are coming from 100%. I think if, I would like to see this supported and a clear consensus on where we're going with this ordinance when it goes to city council. I don't see there needing to be, you know, a discrepancy or a qualifying note there. Everybody has kind of agreed that it's just important to have some form of, some form of analysis and inventory done. It doesn't, nobody's asking for the moon, so I would like to, I would hope that we could go in united on this, but, you know, like all he said, I don't think it's imperative. It just would, I think, be nice since we are working towards drafting this ordinance, and there's pretty clear direction from the planning commission on where we'd like to head with it. We want to draft a good ordinance, a workable, good ordinance, and we want some information at the beginning, so that's my final comment.
Thank you. We do have one more major piece of action that we need to take tonight, and that's a recommendation on the entire comprehensive plan update that is contained in the findings of fact draft that was provided to us. Technically, we can't present our recommendation to council without a motion to make that recommendation. Just throwing that out there, that we need to do that.
I'll make a motion to adopt the findings, facts, and conclusions as amended by the planning commission's discussion here tonight and Exhibit A.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to adopt the findings, of fact, conclusions, and recommendations dated April 21, 2016, incorporating those changes discussed, incorporating Exhibit A and those changes discussed and voted on by the planning commission tonight. Is there any discussion on that? Phyllis? Nope. Okay, well, we, we are obligated to make our recommendations based on a set of criteria. I just want to state for the record that staff included a detailed discussion of those criteria in the findings of fact. I personally read through them and thought that it was very clear and well-written and captured all of the issues that need to be addressed in our analysis. And I think if you look back at the discussions that we've had, the lengthy discussions we've had... had over the past 18 or so meetings, that it's clear that all of these criteria, while they weren't necessarily specifically discussed, the content of them was discussed. And so I think that this recommendation, as staff has noted, is supported by those criteria and is consistent with those criteria. And that's just a comment I'd like to make for the record. And with that, if there's no other comments, we can take a vote. Okay, so we have a motion. I'll, you know, I just stated it. I'm not going to restate it. And I think we should have a vote unless someone needs me to restate it. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And that recommendation passes on to the council, 6-0. And we are done with this topic. I would like to thank everybody. I would like to thank the planning commission members for engaging in this topic in a high level of, lack of a better term, analysis. Everybody got into this more than we have for a number of other topics, and really, I could tell Doug into the issues, valued them carefully. I want to thank staff for taking the time to present all this, draft it all up, copy all the comments down, deal with the things that we didn't agree on, and take the flak from all of us for that. I know that's not easy. And then take those recommendations and incorporate them into a document on our behalf, even though you might not have agreed with them. So we all appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank all the public speakers that we had over the course of this whole time who came and shared all these thoughts with us and all this information. Since we did the waterfront, in my time on the planning commission, since we did the waterfront plan, we haven't had, I think, this much interest in a topic and all the way going back to the growth projections. So appreciate the public involvement and obviously encourage people to continue to participate. And that's it. And I think-
It only took about 19 meetings.
Yeah, we're done, so let's talk about new business. I think we have a little break. Is that right, Greg?
Yes, we do have a bit of a break. May 19 will be your next meeting, and we have two good topics for that night. Lydia Place, the expansion of Lydia Place's facilities on Gladstone Street, and then an amendment to Western's institutional master plan so that they can build a new dorm on campus. Those will be two, I think, interesting topics. And just, we would like to thank all of you for all of your hard work on the plan. It's, it always is better once you get through with it. And even though there are areas where we may not agree, that's okay, and it's part of the process. And if we agreed on everything, then there'd be no point in being here, right? So don't feel badly about disagreeing with us. We have fairly thick skin. It comes with the territory, and it's part of the job, and it's part of your job. And if you disagree, you need to say so. And we don't ever take it personally or think poorly of any of you because we don't agree on some things. It's fine. And I think if you look at the totality of the plan, the things that we disagreed on are pretty small compared to all of the other things that are in there that we do agree on. So thank you very much for your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg. And I think you're right. Those, they're very minor in the bigger scope of what this process has done for our conference of plan. And just a quick note, one of those two is a, just a reminder, it's a quasi-judicial item, right? So we need to make sure that there's no ex parte communication amongst planning commissioners regarding the Western-
The Western, of course, yes.
So, all right. Thanks a lot. We will adjourn.